On my other phone bill. It's nine o'clock, we're gonna go ahead and start. Um, call this meeting of the Boyle County Fiscal Court, May 13th, point twenty-five for order. Uh, has our meeting been advertised and do we have a forum?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Uh, we thought Master Bodner was gonna be teleconferencing, but wow, we had the privilege of her being here in person, so that's awesome.
Adjusted some things and I wanted to be here special today, so.
That's wonderful, okay, and then Magistrate Cullen, uh, is not able to be with us today, so he will be absent today. Um, it looks like it is my turn, uh, for the invocation, so once we get everybody in and you coming in? Mike, oh, okay, alright. Uh, if you all will bow with me, I will have our invocation. Dear Lord, we come before you today to ask for your guidance and your wisdom as we gather for this meeting, and we ask your blessings, uh, upon this meeting as we begin. May our discussions be productive, our decisions be wise, and may we work together in unity to achieve our goals with integrity. Let our conversations be honest and respectful, and our decisions be for the good of all. Give us a spirit of joy and enthusiasm, and may our efforts be rewarded with success. Thank you for each magistrate and the areas that they represent. We thank you for our department heads and the employees under their leadership. We thank you for this county and what it means to all of us. And we ask that your grace be abundant with us as we work together for all things. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Alright, we have a special guest with us today, and that is Meredith Purtle. So Meredith, if you will come up, she is gonna lead us in the pledge. Alright, you may begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Meredith is a third grader at Tolliver Elementary, and Meredith, who has you have with you today?
Um, I have my grandma, my mom, my sister.
Okay, so grandma, name?
Candace.
Mom?
Ginger.
And sister, is that right? Madeline and dad? Alright. We're gonna introduce everyone. Alright. Yes, sir.
I must say that one of my earliest and best friends, uh, in Boyle County, with Peggy and I moved here twenty-four years ago, is Candace.
Yeah, yeah.
I understand that you suffered both math and English in the car every day when you were going, uh, to school.
I did.
But your daughters are highly educated as a result.
Alright, Meredith, we have a certificate for you in recognition of leading the fiscal court in the pledge of allegiance, and if you'll look at Miss Julie, she's gonna take our picture. Alright, and thank you so much, appreciate you being here. You all are welcome, do you want a picture? Okay, come back. Oh, you're fine.
Thank you. Alright, thank you.
You are welcome to stay or be entertained, or you often leave and do whatever you'd go like to do.
Take that, officer.
Thank you all. Have a good day. Alright. Okay, we need to approve the minutes of our prayer meeting.
They're not.
You didn't just send them? Okay, I thought you went ahead and put them out.
No.
You did not, okay, we will do that at the next meeting, my apologies. They're ready, I just did not get them approved. No fault of Katrina. Um, okay, budget transfers. Ms. Shannon?
We have budget transfers in amount of five hundred eighty-one thousand, eighty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Move, we approve the budget transfers as presented.
Okay, I have a motion by Master Gay, second by Master Bodner, any discussion on the transfers? You said five hundred thousand?
Five hundred and eighty-one thousand.
Eighty-one thousand, okay.
We'll take a three-page.
Okay. Okay, now then I'm back on track. Alright, we have a motion and a second, no discussion, all those in favor signify the saying aye. Any opposed, ma'am? Motion here. Alright, now we have the cash transfers.
I have a cash transfer from the interest-bearing account to the general fund for five hundred thousand. Seventy-five thousand from the general fund to the Roth fund.
Okay.
Two hundred thousand from the general to jail. Two hundred thousand from the general to EMS. And ten thousand from the general fund to food.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
No move.
Master Gay, your second?
Second.
Master Sleeper, any discussion on the cash transfers?
I appreciate your clerk when it said general to general.
Alright. All those in favor of the motion, signify the saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, ma'am? Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. Alright, next we have our bills.
Good morning.
Morning.
Your all spill packet, you're gonna see a total of one million, seven hundred fifty-eight thousand, two hundred sixty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents. I would like to add on one invoice, it is for Pro-Tech, and that is for the labor during the outage, when the flood came through and Selcom messed up and everything. That's for the total, a total of one thousand, three hundred twelve dollars and fifty cents. So that's gonna bring our grand total to one million, seven hundred fifty-nine thousand, five hundred eighty-one dollars and twenty-four cents.
You have a motion to approve the bills, Mr. Jennings? Master Harmon, your second? Master Sleeper, any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify the saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, ma'am? Motion carries, bills are approved, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have several, um, proclamations. And the first one is our Older Americans Month. I have asked Ben Grant, the director of the Gathering Place Senior Citizens Center, uh, to be with us today, and so I'll read the proclamation and then I'll present it to you, Ben.
Super.
Alright. Uh, May is Older Americans Month, whereas each May, our nation celebrates Older Americans Month to honor the countless contributions that older adults have made and to continue to make in our communities, workplaces, and families. And whereas older Americans embody the strength, wisdom, and perseverance of our society, having shaped and witnessed decades of growth and transformation. And whereas these individuals continue to play a vital role in our communities through volunteerism, mentorship, civic engagement, and leadership, sharing their talents and life experiences across generations. Whereas older adults have demonstrated remarkable strength and resilience in overcoming challenges and adversity, adapting to change and embracing new opportunities to lead fulfilling and meaningful lives. And whereas ensuring that older adults have access to supportive services, healthcare, affordable housing, transportation, and social engagement is essential to fostering a society where people of all ages can thrive. And whereas Older Americans Month provides an opportunity for individuals of all generations to reflect on the importance of inclusion, respect, and intergenerational in strengthening the social fabric of our communities. Now therefore, I Trilly L. Bottom, Boyle County Judge Executive and the Boyle County Fiscal Court, do hereby proclaim May twenty-twenty-five as Older Americans Month, this day of May.
Thank you very much.
Yes, and we wanna thank you, Ben, for all the work that you do at the center and taking care of our older citizens.
Glad to do it.
So we appreciate everything you did. Alright.
Thank you.
You would like to say anything to the court, or?
I just wanna thank you all for your continued support, I know I was before you just a few days ago, uh, for the funding process, I don't wanna take up any unnecessary time, but, uh, I would like to say that our citizens are certainly, uh, one of the most important and sometimes undervalued commodity in the community. And, uh, through your all support and through the support of the community, we're able to continue to serve them at the, at the highest level possible. So it's with sincere thanks and gratitude, on behalf of the seniors of Boyle County, that I say, thank you.
Thank you, Ben, and we appreciate you.
I too am going to option B. It's always the best. Thank you all very much.
Alright, our next proclamation is for National Treatment Court Month, and we have Denise Gates with us, and, um, I'm sorry, I forgot.
Jacob.
Jacob, alright, Jacob with us, uh, they are part of the national, um, well, they're part of the court treatment.
Specialty courts of.
Specialty court, thank you, alright, help me out there. Alright, same deal, I'll read it and then we'll present it to you. Uh, National Treatment Court Month, May twenty-twenty-five, whereas according to All Rise, treatment courts are the most successful justice system intervention in our nation's history for reducing crime by addressing substance use and mental health disorders. Whereas treatment courts save an average of more than six thousand dollars for every individual they serve. Whereas treatment courts provide a range of economic benefits to a community such as reduced cost in court and prison expenditures, increased tax revenues, lowered foster care expenses, and decreased costs related to victimization. Whereas treatment courts continue, I'm sorry, whereas treatment courts combine accountability with evidence-based treatment, and whereas treatment courts annually refer more than one hundred and fifty thousand people to life-saving treatment and recovery support services. Whereas according to All Rise, treatment courts significantly improve substance, uh, use and mental health disorder treatment outcomes and prevent fatal overdoses. Whereas treatment courts facilitate community-wide partnerships, bringing together public safety and public health. And whereas there are now more than four thousand treatment courts nationwide. Whereas treatment courts demonstrate that when one person rises, we all rise. Therefore, be resolved that I Trilly L. Bottom, Boyle County Judge Executive and the Boyle County Fiscal Court declare that Treatment Court Month be established during the month of May, during this day of twenty-twenty-five. Alright. Present this and then I'll let you all, I'll let him take it. Okay.
Jacob is a phase five participant in our program, so he has been with me for almost eighteen months.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna let him accept it on our behalf.
That's awesome, that's awesome.
Can I give you my phone? That's your last name. Thank you so much.
We wish you the best of luck in your future, and you just hang in there and keep, keep being strong.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you for being here. Alright, EMS? I ask for our crisis team to be here today because it is also Mental Health Month. And, uh, these guys deal with a lot of mental health issues, and this week, this past week, have been, uh, heavy on the, on the mental health issues, haven't they? Yeah, so, alright, I'm gonna read the proclamation and then we'll get together and take a photo, and you all can speak if you'd like to. Mental Health Month, whereas mental health is essential to overall well-being and vital to the health and resilience of individuals, families, and communities across our nation. Whereas millions of Americans face the reality of living with mental health conditions and the impact of mental illness touches every community, regardless of age, race, background, or economic status. Whereas the stigma surrounding mental health continues to prevent too many people from seeking the support they need, while education, open conversation, and access to care remain critical tools in breaking down barriers and fostering understanding. Whereas Mental Health Month is an opportunity to promote awareness, reduce stigma, and support policies that ensure equitable access to mental health care and services for all. Whereas this year's theme emphasizes the importance of connection, community, and care, reminding us that everyone has a role to play in creating a society where mental wellness is prioritized and support is readily available. Whereas we recognize the mental health professionals, advocates, caregivers, peer supporters, and organizations working tirelessly to provide resources, treatment, and hope to those affected by mental health challenges. Whereas investing in mental health promotion, early intervention, and trauma-informed care contributes to safer, healthier, and more compassionate communities. Now therefore, I Trilly L. Bottom, Boyle County Judge Executive and the Boyle County Fiscal Court do hereby proclaim May twenty-twenty-five as Mental Health Month in Boyle County. I encourage all residents to learn more about mental health, speak openly about mental well-being, and support those who may be struggling because mental health is health. These guys do a great job.
Yes.
Um, whenever they get a call and they respond, they're just doing everything they can to help that person that's having the mental health crisis. So we appreciate you all, and we wanna honor you with this proclamation. Y'all will come up, we can get a photo.
We do have Kelsey, is our new, uh, social worker.
Okay, well done, Kelsey.
She started last week.
Mike, do you want to get a picture?
Got a new member in the team.
That's right, that's right.
What is Kelsey's last name? Kelsey Robinson. Robinson.
I'll be in the middle, so we got to gather one. Okay, squeeze in, show the love, come on now. Get in there, Perry, get in there.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, and thank you, and this proclamation goes with you.
Alright, thank you, take care.
You too, appreciate y'all being here this morning.
Thank you.
Have a safe day.
Thank you.
Alright, Public Works? We about to get there. We're about to get there. Public Works, alright, thank y'all for being here today.
Glad to be here.
Next week, the eighteenth through the twenty-fourth is Public Works Week. So we wanna recognize you all today with this proclamation, and then we're gonna come out and support you next week. How about that?
Hey, sounds good.
You know, Katrina's not digging any ditches, you said.
We need all the support we need.
Alright. Uh, National Public Works Week is May eighteenth through the twenty-fourth, the theme is People, Purpose, and Presence. Whereas Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Boyle County. Whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of a public works professional. They are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. Whereas it is the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Boyle County to gain knowledge and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. Whereas the year twenty-twenty-five marks the sixty-fifth Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Therefore, be it resolved, I Trilly L. Bottom, Boyle County Judge Executive, and the Boyle County Fiscal Court do hereby designate the week of May, the eighteenth through the twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies, and activities, events, and ceremonies designed, designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions that they make by protecting our national health, safety, and advancing quality of life for all, dated this day, twenty-twenty-five. And so we have Director Johnson and Director Gordon, our facilities manager, with us today, and we thank you all for the job that you did.
Been a particularly rough year, asphalt.
Every year.
And the salad. Mark, you come over?
Stank it on that side of.
Yeah, you gonna get the picture today. Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thanks, sir, appreciate you all. Alright, uh, next was supposed to be our jailer, uh, Brian Wilford, but he called this morning and said they were not gonna be able to, uh, get up here today. So we'll postpone that and reschedule whenever he is ready to come. Um, okay, next is our Ephraim McDowell. Welcome, welcome. Alright, we got everybody today. That's awesome. Okay, Mark Franklin is with us too, he's the attorney, uh, with Dinsmore and Shaw. And he's gonna explain everything because I know nothing about this.
Judge Bottom's been through this a few times.
I've been through a couple times, but still, it's new every time.
Nice to see everybody this morning, Mark Franklin with Dinsmore and Shaw, I'll be bond counsel for the bonds, and I appreciate everybody's help getting here. Katrina's been a great help, been nice working with her again. Uh, the bond issue is for the benefit of Ephraim McDowell, it'd be, we estimate around a hundred and thirty million, so we presented an ordinance that would approve the bonds. It'd be first reading, and then of course, this meeting, and the second reading at your next meeting. And we'll finance, uh, some pretty exciting improvements, hospital, we can have the representative Ephraim McDowell talk about that. What I usually say as bond counsel is that the, uh, that we involve the county because it allows the interest on the bonds to be federally tax exempt. That basically means Ephraim McDowell gets a lower interest rate than it could otherwise, so you're helping the hospital save money by issuing the bonds rather than Ephraim McDowell borrowing the debt directly. So it's a, it's a cost saving for the hospital, which is a great benefit. The other question we do need to talk about is what impact did it have on the county if you, if you helped, right? And the answer to that is it doesn't impact your debt capacity. So, you know, Kentucky law imposes a debt limit on counties, two percent of your taxable assessment. Doesn't impact that at all, you still have the ability to borrow as much as you need for your own purposes with your own limit. Um, there are some federal tax rules that apply, uh, you, it doesn't impact your ability to issue taxes in debt yourself, now or in the future. There is one implication, there's a benefit called bank-qualified bonds. There's a, there's a rule that says if you issue, if a county, let's say, issues less than ten million dollars of taxes in debt, if the county receives, uh, then it can get a little bit lower interest rate than otherwise, but and so that's one thing bond counsel like to look at. So since we're issuing a hundred and thirty million or so of taxes in debt this year, uh, the county will not have a bank qualifier, BBQ status through twenty-twenty-five. So if you expected to issue debt for yourself this year, or another five oh one C three, that won't be in the millions you have, that's pretty common with, you know, doing the financing like this. Now if you have another five oh one C three, come to the county and asks, uh, can you issue debt for us? Do you want to issue, you know, five million or something less than ten, we need it to BBQ, just call me, and I have a plan.
Okay.
We can get that done.
I gave it a plan yesterday.
We can get it accomplished. Um, but that's the only limit. So for you practically, I don't know if the county had any capital projects, the one thing I can think of is if you would use like the cult program, like CAKO, finance trucks or something like that, that could impact the program like that. But you can still borrow, you can still borrow tax exempt, it would just be, you can still get taxes at a lower rate, it just wouldn't get BBQ. So I just always like to explain that.
Yeah.
And of course, uh, you know, the county's not liable for any of the debt services payable solely with money provided by Ephraim McDowell. Bondholders cannot look to you to make any payments on the bonds. And thankfully, Regions Bank has agreed to buy all of the debt, so it's gonna be pretty simple, they won't be sold to the public.
That's good, yeah.
And we won't have to, you know, offer them, have an offer statement, go through a little bit more complicated deals, a simpler deal, and Regions is just gonna take all the debt itself, so that's a nice benefit. Should sell a tract of the hospital, is if you have more money, you'll take all the debt.
That's great.
Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, we have a lot of stuff in our packet, so next meeting, we will need to have a, uh, bond hearing, is that?
Yeah, federal tax law requires a public hearing.
Okay.
Tina's scheduled that, I think at eight forty-five.
Eight forty-five, so our next meeting, we'll be, we'll have a bond hearing at eight forty-five.
Part of that is just to let the public offer any comments they want to about the bond issue.
Okay, and then we have an ordinance, and then we have a bond indenture.
Those are sample documents for press review, and you can just read off or comment to those anytime you like.
Did you do copy for me?
I did.
Okay, alright.
But yes, this is, uh, ordinance nine fifty point two six, I'm just gonna do the summary, I'm just reading. Uh, this ordinance authorizes the issuance of more and more serious of its hospital revenue and refunding revenue bonds in aggregate principal amount not to exceed a hundred and thirty million dollars for the purposes of financing the cost of the acquisition, construction, installation, and equipping of improvements and renovations to Ephraim McDowell Regional Medical Center, refunding the outstanding county of Boyle County Kentucky Hospital Refunding Revenue Bonds Series two oh one four A, Ephraim McDowell Health Obligated Group, and County of Boyle Kentucky Hospital Revenue Bond Series two oh one four B, Ephraim McDowell Health Obligated Group, in advance of maturity, refinancing a loan incurred with the United States Department of Agriculture to finance improvements to Ephraim McDowell James D. Hagan Hospital, Department of Agriculture to finance improvements to Ephraim McDowell James B. Hagan Hospital, Department of Agriculture, paying costs and fees related to the termination or modification of certain existing hedging transactions related to the foregoing funding reasonably required reserve or debt services and paying the cost of issuance of bonds. The full text of this, uh, ordinance and related documents will be on file here at courthouse in room three twenty-one, West Main Street, or not room three twenty-one, but the address three twenty-one, what's the room, what's the?
One eleven.
Room one eleven of the courthouse, and you can view that between nine and four thirty PM, Monday through Friday.
Move, we approve the first reading of the ordinance number.
Sir.
Okay, we have heard the first reading, and we have a motion to approve, by Master Gay, a second by Master Ellis. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Judge, it's a, oh, sorry. It's a great, great project, uh, gonna be a huge improvement for Ephraim McDowell and our healthcare capabilities in this, uh, county and city. And I'm excited as the representative from the fifth district that it's in my district.
That's right. Master Ellis?
Judge, this is, this is kinda nostalgic to me. Dan, your predecessor and I, Tom Smith, many years back, probably thirty-two, thirty-four years ago, a little outfit in Lexington, close by two initials, um, had decided that, uh, they needed to take over Ephraim McDowell. And I was with Appalachian Regional Healthcare, and they were trying to take us over as well. And Tom and I met with those officials, and the promise was made all those years ago that we would truly, truly become a regional medical center. We were well on the way, uh, under Tom's tutelage, but this is the fruition of the promises that he was making on behalf of your organization, and it's just, um, I don't know, it's, uh, it's almost an emotional thing for me to see this happening because, uh, your dedication last year and everything, uh, it, it just brought back wonderful memories of that session that we had over there where we both said no, and it's coming to fruition here.
And for the court, we will introduce who's here, Dan McKay's the president, Nick Sprenmore, vice president, um, and Amanda Kinman, CFO.
Thank you all very much, we're excited about this project as well, it's, uh, well underway, behind the scenes, a lot of things are happening that you don't see. Uh, we purchased three different buildings and trying to empty out the north tower, renovating the fifth floor on the Johnson Tower, the taller tower, Johnson Tower, that surge is, to do behavior health out. So there's a lot of things you don't see, but the public will start seeing a lot in the fall as we vacate. We, we have the buildings now that we can vacate, fifth floor will open up in June, so we can get behavior health out. Uh, the original hospital, nineteen eighteen, built that hospital, so, uh, it needs to come down. And, uh, and when that comes down, it'll come down in the fall, it'll, it'll, it's gonna open it up, and that, I'm excited about the ER, we need a new ER, we need more rooms, we need more space, we need more parking.
And I understand our EMS director's been involved in some of the planning meetings for.
Yes, ma'am. And Nick, Nick to my right's been real involved in carrying out the day-to-day details, so if you have any questions about this expansion project, but we're excited, it's moving forward, it's on target. Amanda's trying to find the money for us. So it sounds like, we've got, we've worked really hard, and she's worked really hard, uh, with the banks, and we have a really, we have a really great deal, a package that was gonna finances.
Great partnerships.
Yes, we're very, very pleased with the offer that Regions made us, it's a very competitive offer. Um, our underwriters actually told us it's the best offer he's seen in the last decade, so we are really excited about. So we are really excited about, about this opportunity. So thank you all very much. We really appreciate your support.
Okay, uh, comment? Yes, ask your pardon.
1953 is when I came into this world and said, "Ephraim McDowell, my other two brothers, we don't know where they were going." And we didn't research that, so I can claim Ephraim McDowell was my birthplace. Glad that we're there.
As, as a nurse, I appreciate anything we can do for healthcare for our communities that we can stay here instead of have to go reach out. So it'll be a good, a great. We're very blessed, very blessed to have Ephraim McDowell Regional Medical Center in our downtown.
Thank you all very much. We employ about, by the way, about 1,800 people. And when this project is in full blown, I'm told there'll be at least 80 people a day coming in to work on this project. So I think we'll see some economics spin off as well.
Yeah. Alright, any other comments? All right, we will vote on our motion to, um, approve first reading of ordinance number 950.26. All those signify the same aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Upward and onward, yeah. Good to see you all.
Appreciate y'all's support.
Yes. Uh, okay, Sheriff Bottom. Oh, you put that on 13, I'm sorry. Yeah, you all come in. Uh, okay, we'll do EMS week. Anybody else? Would you just, okay, alright. Yeah, I was looking at the old agenda. I'm there now. Alright, also, next week is EMS week, May 18th through the 24th. So we're going to dedicate this proclamation to you today and then we're going to come help you out next week. How about that? All right, EMS week. To designate the week of May the 18th through the 24th as Emergency Medical Services Week, also known as EMS Week. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. Whereas emergency medical services fills healthcare gaps by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. Whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. Whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. Whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating the Emergency Medical Services Week now. Therefore, I be resolved that I, Trilly Elbottom, Volcanic Judge Executive and the Volcanic Fiscal Court, in recognition of this week, hereby proclaim the week of May the 18th through the 24th, 2025, as Emergency Medical Services Week. The 51st anniversary of EMS Week theme is EMS Week, We Care for Everyone. I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities in honor of the EMS profession and the essential service it provides. And I cannot say enough about Director Rogers and the job that he does at our Emergency Medical Center, uh, his staff, um, the, the paramedics, the EMTs, they all work flawlessly together. And it's just, I've said it before, we have the best EMS service in Kentucky, all around. I'm so proud of, of Director Rogers and, uh, and everybody out there that, the job that they do in caring for anybody that's having a medical emergency.
Thank you. We wouldn't be able to do it without your support. And I, I want to make sure, you know, this is a great time to recognize, honor, and sacrifice our providers every day. You know, we sacrifice their mental health to care for others, but it's a great honor. It really is to take, to take care of our, our fellow family and people in Bull County. So, um, you know, we've added social workers. We, we have Dr. Berant, who very commonly responds to these calls. We don't want to forget him. We wouldn't be where we are without his leadership. So it's a, it's a great, it's a great team we have and, and we wouldn't be able to do it without everybody here too, so appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thanks, Mike.
Great leaders here.
Sheriff Bottom and his trustee assistants.
Yes. Good morning. So we are here to, uh, present our local and state, uh, tax settlements for you guys to approve. Uh, we, actually the state owes us one red penny, so.
One red pin.
So we're, we're good there, all zeros and, um.
Awesome.
I'm going to turn it over to Janice, but, uh, I'm, I'm very proud to have Janice in my office. Uh, I couldn't do this without her. Uh, we stopped, we turned our taxes over April 15th to the county clerk's office last week. Andy came and did the audit and so that's how well efficient that she does her job. So within less than a month, we are going to be able to turn this over to you guys. So I'm going to turn it over to Janice.
Okay.
So Trilly knows, um, what this means, uh, when you get this, uh, local settlement done, which means when she signs this, we can turn this over to the state and we get to get our coadus, which means that we get to start collecting our taxes for 2025.
Get your gold star.
To get our gold star. So she knows that that is important for.
That's what she's driving for, that gold star.
That's right. So, uh, yeah, uh, I always like to see that we don't owe the district any money and they don't owe us. So that's always a good thing. So we just need her signature on here so we can get our little gold star for our tax collections for 2025.
Would you like the fiscal court to approve the settlement?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make that motion and authorize the judge to sign.
Master Gay and second by Master Slaver. All those in favor signify the same aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? I feel like you're going to tell me something.
I'm getting ready for the next one.
Okay. Alrighty, there you go.
Thank you all.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too.
We have a jury trial going on, so I'll be heading out.
Well, we wondered what was going on upstairs.
There's a lot going on.
Crazy, crazy. He looks different than the other night.
Ready?
Alright, next is Parks and Rec and we have Director Tommy Barham.
Good morning, Court. Judge Bottom, thank you for having us today. Did you receive a hard copy of the presentation when we got here?
I did not.
Okay, I, I got it brought. Can I give out a copy of them?
Sure, absolutely.
That way you can.
We like this way.
Take this home and I don't quite know how it's going to show up there. The information I got came from three different sources, so I kind of just, I do slap it together.
Appreciate that.
I got, I got people on here. Okay, so I've kind of been asked to do an update, uh, so we're going to kind of go over a few things that we've done out at the park. Uh, and I'm going to concentrate on our partnered areas, which is Millennium Park and Bunny Davis. Kind of keep to that. And the first, first thing I wanted to do was, uh, one of the best things we did this, this, uh, last year was we hired a new maintenance director and she's here today to do a presentation. Her name's Yvette Fly.
Awesome.
We brought her over from Great River Greenery, which is a part, uh, partnership between a city and a county, very similar to what we have going on here, except it was St. Louis. So it's a pretty big, pretty big organization. If you've been to St. Louis, you've seen her parks. She took care of the parks around the arch and along the Mississippi River.
They're beautiful.
Yeah. So we're very happy to have her. Um, I'm going to kind of go over first the capital projects we're doing now, but I'm, the first one we're going to do is, wasn't really a costly one, but it is a well-needed one. Uh, when Yvette came, I charged her with, I gave her this, uh, folder, which is the memorial trees for over the past 30 years. And so it's, it's, let's just say, it's very, not very organized. And we noticed people didn't have plaques on their trees or their trees were dying and we didn't know whose they were. So I asked her to, to bring it into the digital age. So she's going to show you what she has done with that. And this project only cost us at least $500 and a lot of hard work. So here's Yvette.
Alright, welcome.
Hi, everyone. I'm more than anyone, so hi.
Good morning.
So, yes, Tommy handed me this binder here and unfortunately for me, um, my skills in deciphering handwriting are not very strong and that's what they are. It's all just handwritten notes. So if someone called in and they were looking for information about their tree or what happened to their tree, it can take hours to figure out not only what tree they're talking about, but where it's located in the park. So he asked me to come up with something and, um, I started creating a digital database. So this is kind of an overview of Millennium Park and you can see all the little trees on there, our memorial trees. It's kind of hard to see on there, but there's also memorial benches on there as well. When it's planted, the information from the donor, species of the tree, and any maintenance that might need. And it also allows us to add photos to it as well. My favorite part about it is it is actually geolocated, so we can send directions to folks if they ask, hey, where's my tree? So we can send them directions to get to their tree. So my, my goal is to at some point in time be able to kind of release it to the public in some capacity so that if they are walking out in Millennium Park and they're noticing their tree and they feel special love or attention, they can be able to comment on it. That's right. And then there is, this is very good. Excellent.
And you've got my attention when you mentioned trees have died. Uh, I've got a very good friend who had a memorial tree.
For, for anyone getting a new memorial tree, we've limited it down to four different types of trees and, and, uh, people were able to do benches and kind of landmarks out in the park. Well, we've gotten to the point where we can't really put any more of those in. So, so basically we're limiting it to just trees now, uh, and, and we can have a better handle on it also that way.
Yeah, because those trees are native to Kentucky. So we were having some trees that were not native and they're very hard to keep them alive during winter time or high drought during the summertime. And so that, limiting to the four native Kentucky trees.
What do you know off the top of your head, what four are?
Black gum, uh, and then with the, we had to pine.
It's a, just a curious question. It doesn't matter.
Yeah. Red October, black gum, and then we haven't decided on the evergreen trees. We want to, we want to be able to do some evergreens, so we haven't really decided on the type. But basically that's the three. You can get an evergreen, you can get a black gum, or you can get the red October.
Okay, very good.
And pin oaks are having a problem all over Kentucky. You're, you're aware of that? Yeah. Unfortunately, I planted a few, so.
So, so we're very excited to have Yvette here.
Thank you all for doing that, yeah.
She's running a, a great crew out there. She's been a great leader and, uh, she's taken over since October. Uh, and then, so I'm going to go over a few of the other, we did not have a, uh, official capital budget, but I wanted to pride enough to get a few things done. These are, these are projects that we did at Millennium Park, uh, in the past year and the cost that the, the city committed to this. Um, we, we rehabbed softball field number two. That was one of our worst softball fields. It hadn't been done, uh, since the park was clay, but it, it comes to us baked. So when it rains, it does not lose its granular quality. Instead of turning to paste, like if you go out on a baseball field with bare feet, it'll squish through your toes. Well, this stuff stays granular, so it, it is able, uh, we're able to play on this field every day. If it rained an hour before, we can play on this field. And it is, uh, kind of helped us out a lot. Um, we've brought in, uh, DCA didn't have a place to play, so they've been renting that field for their baseball team, uh, for this summer. And, uh, we're also moving co-ed softball to this field. We also put in a warning track. So what happens if there's no warning track is that clay is up against the fence. It rains, it washes the clay out onto the concourse and if you spin out there, you see it's kind of all over the place. The warning track stops that. So it keeps the clay where it needs to be and keeps the sidewalk where it needs to be. So we are hoping and I'll get in this a little further. It was such a success, uh, that, um, the city's hoping that, we're hoping to do a few more fields this year. Uh, it's tough because we have a window of three weeks. Uh, once the season ends in October to when the weather changes in November, those are our three weeks that we rehab this. So it's a, it's a big job. Um, we also re-sotted the large soccer field. It's up on the, uh, the, the top of the park, so that was a, that was a $41,000 project. Um, we striped and handicapped the whole park, which I don't know if it had ever been done. Um, so, so the parking lines are all in. We have the correct amount of handicap, uh, at each spot. Uh, the handicap is marked and it's, it's improved greatly how the logistics of the park and how people are parking. Go ahead.
On that, I mean, I just thought it was interesting that, you know, this Saturday, there's a lot going on on a Saturday morning.
Yeah.
And there, it amazed me though, it, the beautifully striped parking lot, how empty it was and everybody was parking on the grass.
Yes, they all still want.
So how do we do, how do we get away from that?
Well, if you notice, we also, um, from where they built the tennis courts, there's that big pile of rocks. We are moving that to, we're moving that kind of like rock sculptures, I guess you'd call them. And we're kind of putting them strategically where those people park. And so we're trying to stop it. And they're tearing up the parking lot too.
Yeah, it was, it was kind of amazing because it was, they were parking on the grass no more than, let's say, 20 yards from the parking lot.
Yeah.
It's all striped and you know, you can clearly tell where you can park. And I was just like.
Wow. Well, it's a particular, I don't want to offend anybody here, but if you go out to soccer, they all park perfectly in their soccer line. Something to do with travel softball, baseball, that they have to be as close to those diamonds as they possibly can be. And it.
Can you put up a, a temporary little line?
That's where the rocks are going to be.
Yeah, the rocks, that's where the rocks are. We're trying to pretty much stop them there. Um, we've, we've strategically put them to try to stop, try to stop people from also driving up on the concourse. We're trying to get away from that also.
Yeah.
Um, one of the other things we've done is we, uh, retrofitted all the batting cages. Uh, well, I'm sorry, four of the batting cages. So when I came, they, there was no nets in them. They were kind of torn up and unusable. So now we have two at softball and two at baseball that are completely functional. Um, and another big thing we did is we started an athletic field turf treatment. So we have a professional company come in and do herbicides and pesticides on all athletic fields six times, six, is it six? Six times a year. Um, so we should, we won't really see the, that come to fruition until, uh, till, probably not another year because it'll take a while. But we should see all the broadleeds gone, the dandelions gone in the athletic fields. And you can actually tell the grass is, is filling in and growing up, uh, much better out there. So I think that was a huge one. But then I'm going to go on to my personal. When I came here, my whole goal was to eliminate those 55-gallon blue drums that were all over all over the park. They didn't put bags in them, so it was unhealthy, it was unsanitary, and it was actually dangerous. And the way it was dangerous is staff had to lift those fifty-five gallon drums, pull the trash into the truck, and then drive to the dumpster, get in the truck, and lift them into the dumpster. And I know this, because I've done this many times myself. So we replaced, we took, first thing we did was we got rid of every blue barrel in the park. It's gone. We purchased, I believe, upwards of fifty...
Just shy of fifty.
Just shy of fifty trash cans that are smaller, and we're actually using bags in them now. So the park is cleaner, the park has less trash, the staff are easily able to move trash one person instead of a crew. So I'm, it's a small thing, but a guy like me, it's a, it's a big win, so I love that one. We also painted all the foul poles where we're really bad, and, and the thing about foul poles, if you've been to a major league game, it is the centerpiece of a baseball field. It's the first thing you see shooting up out of the air. They were all unpainted. Uh, we got them painted. If you drive through the park, you, you notice them right away. So those are, those are some of the big projects we did this year without a capital project. Some of the small things we did, we had to replace a slide, and we, uh, we got a new soccer goals out there at the request of our soccer program. So with that, um, this, this came from the city. This is actually what they did in their budget meeting last week. Myself, uh, I presented a capital project to the finance department, and kinda had them listed as important, moderate, or, or basically low-level capital projects. So, and then the city officials took it and put it into a category of basically, the first column is mo, first priority, the second column, the second priority, and then goes to third priority. And it, and I watched that budget meeting that the city held, and I'm gonna try to, uh, rephrase Earl's words, is a lot of the projects that are in the second priority are county, uh, city, uh, partnership, and, and he was saying that they can easily be moved to top priority, but he's got them in second to find out what the county wants to do with all that, too. So I'm, and I'm just gonna run through the ones that are kinda on our shared facility. Millennium Park skate park improvement was three hundred thousand dollars to do, uh, that's to revamp and do a full replacement of the, uh, the skate park. Of course, the Alum Springs mountain bike park's on there for two hundred and fifty. That's a joint one that can easily be moved into first priority. Millennium Park dog park shelter is, we, we'd like to put a, some kind of shelter right there in the middle of the dog park, so when people can, there's no shade or nothing down there. We also had got a barren piece of land that grass won't grow on, and so it would be to effect that we could eliminate that, uh, eliminate that dirt middle that won't grow grass and put a shelter on top of it. And then we got, uh, the Millennium Park central playground. We, we've, we've reviewed the play, the main playground, which we believe has life left in it, but there are a few small features in that main park playground area that need to be replaced, uh, and then there's a few that are missing. And then, uh, if we go down further, uh, we've got, uh, the Millennium Park ball field improvements. We'd like to do three fields, the same as we did softball field two. So we wanna do, uh, fields three and four at baseball, which are the, uh, dirty fields. Those right now are in really bad shape. And then softball field number two.
One.
Oh, I'm sorry, softball field number one at softball. So that, that project was so successful, we'd, we'd like to try to get three done this fall, and then possibly next year. All we gotta do is two more, and we would have all the fields revamped. Of course, the big, big one on here, they did put the indoor rec on there, the twenty-two million. They're talking about a bond issue for it, but if you watched that finance meeting, they talked about a lot of these things. They talked about, uh, they talked about restaurant tax, um, some, some partnerships that we're working through. That one's just an ongoing project that we're looking to funding. We were told to get it on there, and so we can get some talks moving forward with that. The other joint one on there is a new utility vehicle. This would be a, basically a mule or a four-by-four, uh, and we also need some kind of snow removal on it, because a lot of people are asking us to keep those trails clear to snow. And, uh, what we have is not sufficient, so we need to get, we'd like to do it like Center does it. Have you seen, they got the brush that does them, so it won't damage the, uh, the trails. So we're hoping that that, that's what we get this year with that. And I believe, and then, uh, the Millennium Park Performance Pavilion, that's in your third category. We do have a grant for half of that, um, and according to Josh, who got that grant, that is two, we, we won't receive that money for two years, so that's why it's in the third column. So we're waiting on that to, uh, to get that money, and then we can talk about where would that pavilion go and what it would be. So do you have any questions on these projects? This, this, the city council has not decided on any of it. It was just presented to them last week. They asked me to come and do the same presentation for you. And then how we go about discussing partnerships and how we wanna share things is, is we'll be up to the council and the court. We gladly do as many, as many as we can, obviously. We, we're all for all these projects, so, but whatever the elected bodies decide to do, be great. And if you have any questions on these capital projects, uh, we can go through them now if you'd like.
Okay. Any may have any questions for Tommy?
Well, I would, and this is to Madam Bonner as well, but do we, I thought we had some money already, did we not set some money aside for the mountain park?
Put it in the capital projects list, so it was just sitting there, you know? So we really have, just put it in a capital list.
Okay, but, so we have, that's been, so that's one that I would like to see us kinda move forward on, because it's a, it's a unique, um, park, if you will, I guess.
Yes, yes.
And a need that I do think is, and not to steal Madam Bonner's thunder, she's done a great job pushing this one along, but it's something that I think we have a, a, a good location for, provided we can get through the different obstacles that we have that I don't think are insurmountable. So that, and then, I'm, I was heavily involved in the, in the skate park now, however many years ago that was, and, uh, it's definitely time. And that, again, is one of those features that I think attracts a different type of athlete, um, and, or athletic participation that comes into the park. It's not that traditional thing that we often think of, and that was what motivated me. You know, I, I learned the laws of physics early on in life on the skate, on the skateboard, and I stay away from them, because believe me, when you're going down a hill, do not get off.
You don't have a break.
Yeah, that's right. I was head over heels with a whole lot of skin left behind after I tried to step off going down a hill on the skateboard. Didn't work out well for me, so it's real stuff. But I, I'm hoping that we can find a way to refreshen that, because I do think, as far as I know, it still gets...
It gets a lot of use.
A lot of use. And then just last comment I wanna make about this, which I'm passionate about our park and how beautiful it is, and the use it gets, but I understand we have some camping going on out there right now, that I was told about in our EMS meeting this morning, that there's an individual camping down in the bottom corner of the dog park area that's a not-housed, not-housed person. So I guess one of the questions that was brought up in the EMS meeting this morning is, does the park, is the park, 'cause they, they were concerned about whether they could run them off or not, because this individual is, is saying that the park is always open.
My, I believe we have signs that...
And I, I think it's signs that it does close at a certain time. It does, uh, okay, so I think that's something that we need to keep an eye on.
We, we've had situations like that, and we usually call the police and...
I think they're down at that bottom back access point.
Right.
Past the dog park.
Right. Kind of that back entrance where, uh, our dial works.
Yeah, so it's kinda tugged in there, yeah. So they're kinda tucked in there, and I guess that would, we need to get that under control before we build a pavilion down there.
Right. I hear you, I understand.
Um, so I think that's, I didn't know that you all weren't aware of that, but the EMS personnel have had some encounters with this person, our, our mental health and crisis management team.
We'll get right on that. And Paula, I believe the, the mountain bike park, there was an access, right? There was some kind of property that we're still dealing with? That's kind of been the holdup?
Well, no, um, I think we need to decide, do we want to try to acquire another piece of property for an entrance? Or do you want to incorporate the entrance with the Alum Springs Convenience Center? I think that's gonna be the number one.
Right, that's it, yeah.
That's the biggest issue.
That's the biggest issue, kinda holding this one up.
Yes.
Well, it's not holding it up. I think, now that we know you're on board, I think we can, we can make a hard decision with you on what we want to happen there.
Right.
We just never heard from the city that you were...
Okay. Well, yeah, that's all right. Again, that's what we're trying to do, is get to keep the lines of communication open.
So we'll get that one going, and get it in the budget.
We're kinda...
You're gonna get it in the budget.
We're kinda...
Are you getting it in the budget, Tommy?
What's that?
Is it in the budget?
Well, I, they're discussing it now, that they're, they'll be approving these, this is what has been presented to them.
Okay.
And they went through them all in category, I believe it's another week before they're gonna do it.
We need to talk to them.
Yeah.
Yes, that's, yeah.
And I think there needs to be some communication.
We've got the Trails Alliance, they're wanting to meet about some things, and so we've got lots of people interested now, which has taken a while to get us all together. But now it seems like we're trying to come together. I don't wanna get hearts up.
No, I think we need to get, can we meet in the next week? Because our final budget is next week.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Josh, that segues right into my first of two issues. You might note, if you see our minutes from last, last meeting, this is something that I said, Parks and Rec is so critical to this community, uh, that I made a comment two weeks ago in our meeting, that we need to get everybody from the city council, everybody from fiscal court, and then these other folks need to have the opportunity to come and speak to us in a joint meeting of both, uh, of these governmental bodies as quickly as we can, because again, we're under the gun on our budget, so that's gotta happen almost yesterday, so that's something we need to get on the calendar immediately. And then the second thing, I think, Tommy, this was before you came, but, um, we have such a magnificent lake in the park, that a couple of years ago, I recommended that we have a tournament. Now, I might be way behind, but do you all realize that we now have the state young women's winner of a competition that just has happened recently? She's a young girl who is at Boyle County High School.
So great.
And, uh, we could almost commemorate her win. I, I mean, it's phenomenal, it's wonderful, uh, and have a state, have a tournament or two every year at the lake, because I saw, I saw a guy walking out of there with, uh, twelve or fifteen really nice blue gills one time, so...
Yeah, it's stocked all the time, and we've begun doing fishing derbies. I wanna say, was it Center College? Center College Fishing Team just put a youth one on, uh, a couple of weeks ago.
Wonderful.
And, uh, and we did one in the fall also. So, yeah, we're, we're ready for that, absolutely.
Well, it'd be great to honor her, uh, you know, with something out, out there this year, too.
We can easily put one together that's actually through the Parks and Rec.
And that's not a big cost item either, so...
No, not at all. Yeah, I used to run a kid fishing, um, every year, so I'm, I'm pretty familiar with running those.
Kewauna sponsored that one time, too. They brought kids out there from Sunrise.
Yeah, right.
And we get a fishing event, not a tournament, but an event with, with those kids.
Oh, yeah, I'm all about that, that'd be great. So, for what I'm thinking is, is, I'll get together with Julie...
Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
What are your county, city, top three?
The, well, if you look at the first, first category there is, and you're looking at your, your joint ones, is the ball fields, uh, the utility vehicle, uh, and the, uh, obviously the indoor rec, which is kind of an asterisk one, I think.
Yeah, that one, set that one.
So I think those are the, those are the city's top priorities for those, and then, of course, if you're looking at, uh, the ones in the second tier...
Yes, that's right.
They're, the, the Alum Springs Mountain Bike Park is, is right up there. I would say the, uh, skate park and, uh, Central Playground would be, if you ask me to put them in order, yeah.
Well, let's try to shoot for Thursday or Monday.
Okay.
We've got availability on Thursday morning.
Thursday morning, might be, cause you know, when, if, I know Josh and Earl went to DC, or...
Are they there? Because I just texted Earl, and he's not answering back.
Yeah, they went to DC today.
I think they're on the plane right now.
Yeah, he's on the plane. I don't know when they get back. Is it, mm, I don't know. Let me, I'll...
Might need to go Monday. Okay.
Let's shoot for Monday.
Okay.
And I'll get a, I'll, I'll get ahold of Josh here after this meeting, so we'll shoot for Monday. And then we just need to talk about how we would get that group meeting.
Monday morning, preferably.
That'd be fine.
If, if possible.
That'll work. That'll work.
I just want, yeah, go, go ahead, Paula. I just wanted to mention that it's a use of a space that's not available to use for anything else.
That's right.
And it's also gonna bring in more tax money into the city and the county, and it will be an investment. So it just seems like, oh, you're making that. But I do have, like, your grandson who says, when's the bike park coming? And there's a, the high...
I was asked several times this past week, when's the bike park?
And the high school, we've got a lot of interested parties that wanna, want this to happen, so it's...
I think there's a lot of momentum for that.
I think, I feel in more interest all of a sudden, so...
I heard yesterday that there's an adjoining landowner or close by that's...
Yes, he's spoken to.
Already has some trails.
Yes.
Yeah, so he may want to partner, too, you know, or balance something. I don't know for sure, but anyway.
Well, I just like that, well, I'm coming to you with, what, why I went to the city, now we just gotta get together and make some decisions.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Let's try to meet Monday morning.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Uh, to moving on, this one I kinda put together just to kinda show you our programs and kinda the numbers that we have. If you look at, uh, our yearly program, that's, that's the day camp that we put on, and they're swimming at the, they use swim at the Bunny Davis Pool every day. They go to movies, they go to the splash pads. Uh, that has eighty-two percent, uh, county residents, that's, you know, people that live within the boundaries of Boyle County. Memberships are people at Bunny Davis, so that's like a monthly snapshot of how many members we have using the fitness center. Baseball, softball, uh, we have five hundred and forty-six kids signed up. Seventy-seven of them are from out of county, so it's an eighty-six percent, uh, county participation. Pickleball leagues, these are adults, pickleball league, that, that's a new thing we've had. Uh, we don't have their address information, so I'm not able to tell whether they're county or not. Swim team, we've got thirty-four kids, a hundred percent from county. Tennis lessons, seems like, yeah, twenty-five percent of kids coming for tennis lessons are coming from different county.
Oh, okay.
Coed softball, it looks like seventy-three percent is from the county. This is an adult program. Volleyball, that's an adult program. Uh, it looks like we have about fifty percent of people coming from out of county. Basketball, cheerleading, got a lot of kids in that, hundred, eight hundred and one kids, with only forty-nine of them out of county, so ninety-four percent. And Cal Ripken, that's who we partner with. I don't have their numbers, uh, their addresses, so I'm unable to tell, but I believe Cal Ripken, if you're doing it right, you're not supposed to take people from out of district, so... Of course, BISA, that's the Boyle County Youth Soccer Association. They had three hundred and forty-three kids. Our special events that the parks put on, uh, those are estimated numbers we have. Easter egg hunt, uh, over seven hundred. Fourth of July, we think we have over five thousand people in the park. Touch Truck, two thousand. Fall Festival, one thousand. Dog swim, I don't have that, because the dogs don't fill out any information.
No paw print stamp or anything?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't have any dog information. Uh, and then, of course, those are our rentals. We do twenty-eight, twenty-eight travel tournaments a year at, uh, Millennium Park, uh, which I, I estimate bring in two, three thousand people, and there may be one or two county teams, but you're talking Louisville, Lexington, uh, all people coming from all around the mid-state here. Shelter rental, I was right, we do over two hundred shelter renter rentals a year at Millennium Park. And then, of course, that's people actually reserving it, and then there's a lot of people that just come in and have a, have a party. I think Mother's Day, I was out there Mother's Day, and, uh, there was, there was Mother's Day parties in the weirdest spots, like down at the dog park, there was one. There was somebody at the baseball complex having a Mother's Day party, and of course the shelters were all full, so, quite a bit. And I thought this number was, uh, telling, too, uh, party rentals, uh, that's just And I thought this number was telling too, party rentals, that's just at Bunny Davis upstairs, seventy-five, over seventy-five a year. And then five Ks that we don't put on, that, that kind of, usually they're a community organization, so they're not being charged. Uh, but we have over twenty a year at Millennium Park. So I thought that'd be some good numbers for you, just kinda look over and see, uh, the use of the park. I have two other issues to go over. One would be the fireworks for this year. Uh, I believe usually it's been a county, city joint participation. So I wanted to explain it a little bit. Last year, I wanna say it was sixteen thousand was the bill. Uh, so we put out a bid this year and, um, there, I, I don't wanna be too harsh on them, but we did get a lot of criticism, criticism from the last provider we had. I don't know if you have, but they said the fireworks are low, they were too low. Uh, so I kinda, I didn't court these guys, but there's actually some of their, I guess you call them pyrotechnics, live here in Danville. And they saw this firework show and reached out to me and said, hey, man, you gotta get a better firework show. So we asked them to bid, we asked the prior, from last year to bid. And I believe, you know, obviously a lot of this stuff comes from China. Long story short, it gone. Uh, the people that bid last year, the people that did the fireworks last year bid the same show. Instead of sixteen, it was now twenty-one thousand. So we could have the same show for twenty-one. Or we had this company called Pyro Shows, who actually, I did some research on. They do, they do all UK fireworks, they do Tennessee Titans fireworks, they do NASCAR fireworks. They bid a show of twenty-five thousand and they were much more professional and it seemed like a much better show. So the city went with that bid. So, yeah, when we're looking at twenty-five thousands, that'll be something you guys will have to look into. Just letting, I let Earl know what you guys wanna do. But they have already proved it, it's signed. I think they paid half, so we have it reserved. If it, if it, it is for the fourth, and if we have a rain date, it'll be on the fifth, which I believe is a Saturday. So we're gonna have lots of cool things going on in the park this year. We are doing, uh, Paint the Park the day before, which we have partnered with the Art, uh, Art Center. And kids will be allowed to paint a four-by-four square in the parking lot. We kinda did a little experiment of it last year. But this year, we're opening to the public. We have sponsors that are paying for it. Uh, we hope to have over two hundred participants. And basically, we, the kids can paint whatever they want, but usually they paint some kind of patriotic theme. But we'll let them paint SpongeBob, if they wanna paint SpongeBob. We are talking about maybe making it, uh, making, making it judgeable, so we do have winners or something. So we're hoping for that. We're hoping to put on a concert. And of course, we're trying to do a three-on-three basketball tournament along with all the other things we've done in the past. So that's what we have planned for the fourth. Uh, and then the other one, I know you've talked about, the city, Earl requested, asked for half of the, or, not half, but asked you guys if you wanted to contribute to the pool leak problem. So I wanted to.
It was half, half of twenty.
I wanted to kinda, you know, fill you in on that because, uh, what this is, is a company called American Leak Detection. They come in, so we were losing six, almost four to six inches a day in the pool. And when I shut the pumps off at the end of the season, it didn't leak as bad. So I determined, well, our leaks must be in the piping system, cause we're losing more water when the pumps are running. So what they do is they come in, plug everything up, put in some kind of, some kind of gas, and they're able to see where the leaks come up through, through the concrete. They identified three major leaks. So they dug the concrete up, redid all the plumbing in those three areas, tested it again. And that's what their cost was that they billed us for, was those three leaks. They ran the test again and said, sorry, Tommy, we're seeing four other leaks, smaller leaks. So I was very upset and I said, well, you know, I tried to, you know, have them do it for free, but then they showed me in their contract that it says, after we've repaired there, there may be additional leaks. So I was unable to get them to patch those. What I was able to do is talk them into another procedure. Instead of digging into it, they tried to patch them from the inside. So they, what they call PVC welded, uh, so it's basically a welding, but with plastic. So they kind of welded inside the pipes, uh, those four additional leaks. And we don't know if that's fixed or not. So what we've done is, Mother's Day, I spent the day filling the pool. It's full now, uh, it's sitting on edge. We are filling, we, we do have two hoses in it, but it appears to be holding. So it doesn't really look like it's lowering. Once, and, and once Andy from the water department comes, we're gonna turn the pumps on hopefully later today, and we'll know more. So we're hoping it, it's, it's a, it's a, you know, it's, those day campers, those ninety day campers, we need that pool for them kids. So we hope to get, it works, uh, we'll know more. But as I came, I checked the pool this morning before I came there, and it, it was holding. So it wasn't losing water. We do have two hoses in it, which we can let run all year if we have to. But to keep that pool open, we're gonna try to do whatever we can.
Have they guaranteed that second procedure?
No, they haven't, cause they've never done it before. So they said, we can try it. So they're trying it. They're gonna come back, once I get the pumps on, and see how it goes. But the city was committed to it. You know, I think they just kinda asked, you know, hey, you wanna help us out with it? It's not, they're not strong-arming, they're saying, hey, you wanna help us out?
Yeah.
But it's my understanding, we didn't know about the secondary leaks.
Right.
When you came to us the first time.
Correct, I guess.
That's, that's a problem, because I think it was known before the decision was made to spend that additional money.
What, uh, they, they.
There weren't any additional money though, was there?
No, there, no, no.
No, just the ten thousand's all they requested.
And we, we told them not to do any more work. The additional leaks they found, I don't believe they're billing us for that welding. They haven't billed me yet. So, but the city said, we can't spend anymore than that, the original amount on them, which they were the first three leaks that they fixed.
Yeah, and one was a, a major.
One was a major, the whole, whole deep, the whole side of the deep end was dug up, yep.
I know the kids use it, and it's the, the park, I mean, it's a really good thing, I think, to help them get their pool. They have those ninety-four kids, they come in there, and it's, I think it's a good thing, I, I wanna help them.
We can take motion today.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion by Minister Bodnar, a second by Minister Gay, to pay ten thousand dollars on the Bunny Davis Pool repairs, for discussion.
Jamie, I guess the old pool at Center is gone now, literally.
Well, I don't know if it's gone yet, but it's, it's a dry hole in the ground now. And it was in, it was built in nineteen sixty-six.
Hey, that was a good year, John.
Things that were built in are getting really old.
You know, we, we have, we, we have that conversation about old folks.
But they're younger than me, cause I was, I was built in sixty-one.
That older, uh, elderly, yeah, proclamation has remained today too.
Uh, I, I still feel like we need to, I know it's not, our solution is we need a new pool. That's our solution.
Right, we're just trying to keep it going.
Yeah, if we can just keep it going, going, I mean, I don't see, foresee us putting a lot more money in it, because this is, this would be it for me.
Yes, and the city's the same way.
Yeah, I'm hoping that we can keep it until we get the new pool. But we need a new pool, kids love pools.
And it's our, and it is our, our publicly accessible pool. So everybody in Boyle County, and as I say, everybody lives in Boyle County.
Right.
Right. Um, it, I think deserves to have access to a pool.
I will make this last comment too. Uh, I believe that our new pool should be in Millennium, because that's our star place. And, and our new pool, I just believe it needs to be there. So that's just a comment.
Be easy on me.
The day camp, the day campers use the pool, right?
Every day, yep.
And that's eighty-two percent Boyle County people.
That's correct.
Correct.
The same door, outdoor pool.
The one, the one we currently have is.
The outdoor, yeah.
Bunny Davis.
What are we looking at?
Or the new one?
Yeah.
We're hoping, if we, if Josh and I did the tours of, of all these rec center, we really like this retractable roof idea.
I like that.
It's really cool.
I like that.
Um, and I've, I, I've seen them in action, I've talked with the owners. It's a really viable company and it, and it works great. I mean, I, I went to three in North Carolina. Uh, one was ten years old and one had just been put in. And the people that run them, love them, they, they showed me how they work, they were great. It's, it's indoor/outdoor basically, so.
A pool's not just entertainment, it's healthcare.
Yeah.
And if you get these kids out, get them planning a pool, even if it's just the ninety-four, but we know others come there and use it also. But we get that new pool, it's at Millennium, we have a lot more kids running around, using energy instead of sitting on their phones, so.
We plan, what was on our tours, we also noticed that the pools that had play features, like slides and all stuff like that, were, were, capacity was much higher. They're, and you were using much more than just a pool that was a lap pool. So we wanna put toys in. Um, the idea of the, having a retractable roof is, you, you can use the pool all year long.
Yeah, if it's raining, you can still swim.
Yeah, you can still swim. And the fact that when you have to shut a pool down and then reopen it, it just adds, it, it just, it's easier to run a pool all year long than to shut it down, you know? So it'll be much, much better.
Well, and that's been one of my soapbox issues as well, because I do feel like in our geographic location in our country and weather, and also just usage, that, that we need some type of enclosed space. Whether retractable roof would be ideal, because again, we have a very short outdoor pool season. And, you know, and, because really soon after the Fourth of July, while the weather's still good enough, just the usage, I think, really declines after the Fourth of July because of our school schedules and athletic team schedules and everything. Life just picks up the pace after the Fourth of July.
Two good months, basically.
Yeah, so it's, it's a really short outdoor pool season. But at the same time, I think that citizens deserve to have access to a pool. So that's justifying why this money is.
One cautionary point though would be the cost of heating that for about nine months of the year. I, I, I agree with you, but we, we really need to know everything about it before we.
Oh, yeah, before we get to it.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Well, that's why we've gotta, as the city's working on and I, I support that effort is, uh, there's gotta be a revenue stream.
Yeah.
To support the type of Parks and Rec, um, system that I think our citizens deserve.
I agree. Do you all give swimming lessons to the camps?
We don't do swimming lessons, we have like adult aerobics and we got swim team. But, I mean, we will do swimming lessons if we find instructors. We just kinda have many of them on staff that is teaching them, so. But we want to, we've talked about it.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Especially with the new pool, I think it, with, with a heated pool, we're gonna get a lot more adults in there. Cause I ain't going in that pool. And then, like, your smaller infant swims and stuff like that, you kinda need heat for that. Cause that, that pool's too cold.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, any other discussion on the motion on the floor? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to, um, pay ten thousand dollars toward the Bunny Davis Pool leaks? See if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Do you guys have any other questions for me?
I think we have a meeting day.
Oh, we do have a meeting day.
Oh, do you get a hold of?
Monday morning at eight-thirty, and they'll be at City Hall.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you all so much.
Monday morning at eight-thirty.
Thank you.
We'll see you soon.
All right. Monday morning at eight-thirty.
And we will advertise that.
Tell Earl to send you from now on, so you have better luck.
Thank you, John, thank you.
We need to let Mark know about that Trail Alliance. Maybe, we said we had Monday and Tuesday open. Mark Morgan. I told him we had both those mornings open, or I had told him, I have, and I know this truly.
Yes, I remember that, yes, yes, yes. Well, Monday morning's now gone.
Yeah, now it's gone, so we got one day.
Yeah. Okay, then next, uh, we have a, I thought they might stick around. Is he still here? Tommy?
Yeah, he needs to be.
Tommy, Tommy still here?
He's gone. Oh, he's gonna run him down.
Good.
I, I thought about that earlier.
He probably didn't remember, but.
He did. We, well, we went on and.
Yeah.
He's out the door.
He's gone, okay. Well, next is, we have, um, um, a board member's term that expired, that was Yolanda, not Yolanda.
LaFonda.
LaFonda Stalwart. Uh, her term expired in February, and so we've taken a little time to get the replacement, but there's been some other things going on behind the scenes. But today, I would like to present Jason Lamb, um, as the, as the, as the new board, um, member for Parks and Rec.
And I want to mention that he's been very instrumental in my district in supporting the Junction City Matters Group and has been at our events, and so I know he'll do a great job. Of course, I watched him as a kid play ball, so I watched him play, good, very good ball player.
Yeah.
Uh, so I'm real excited to see him on this court. I know he'll do a great job.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Measure motion, saying it by Minister Ellis. Any discussion? Jason, would you like to say anything to the court?
Uh, I appreciate it, the opportunity to do this. Been a Danville, Boyle County resident all my life. Grew up in the Parks and Rec system and started at five years old playing T-ball at Sixth Street Park, but, you know, I'm no longer this, but, and then graduated from Danville High School. I have two daughters, both, one has graduated from Boyle County, so, and the other one graduates this year. So I've been both school systems, been in the county. And, you know, I'm a big advocate for kids and getting back out. I see what our society's done, and, you know, I think kids need to get back out, get back out in the field, get back out playing. So I think that goes along with the mental health thing. I think it'll help improve mental health for our future, so. I just look forward to being part of this and see what happens.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, so, uh, all those in favor of the appointment of Jason Lamb to the Parks and Recreation Board? See if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Uh, Jason, your term ends May the thirteenth, twenty twenty-nine. You're invested, sir, you're invested. All right. Do you hope that's aye? Congratulations, and thank you for volunteering to do this.
Thank you.
And he's lived in my district for eighteen years.
Eighteen years in Boyle's district, all right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jason, appreciate it.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Okay, next up, CDB update, Ken Montgomery, 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 I cannot talk today. And Kendall Lynn.
I wanna gizzle. Well, we'll start out with a cash balance. Currently, we have ninety-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars total cash, of which forty thousand dollars is a CD, and that's kind of our backup money. Uh, our cash has dropped substantially over the last two years due to the ARPA funds that we use, and we're completely satisfied all the ARPA requirements. All hotels are current with their tax. I think we're still, we're still struggling with some of the part-time.
Yeah, I was gonna mention, um, the ordinance you all passed last year with the twenty percent penalty, how some Julius, we had, um, seven short-term rentals as of January that hadn't paid or were behind, and we're now down to three.
Oh, good.
So ones that have never paid, came in, got current.
Oh, good.
And we're, we still got a little bit of an issue with some hotels, but we are, um, much better than we were, I'll say that. Couple of them that tended to be behind are now usually current. Still, a few issues getting worked out, but it's, it's much improved.
That's awesome.
Um, we're scheduled to do a first reading of our budget Monday.
Okay.
And, um, our revenues are, are kinda stagnant right now, because there's no way for, the hotels are running at capacity. We do have a construction that was started this year, and it's scheduled for next spring, I guess.
Yes, I'm right.
So that'll provide some more revenues.
That's that home to.
The long-term stay.
Yeah.
Any questions?
All looks good.
Appreciate y'all being here.
Well, thank you.
Kendall, you got something to say?
Gizzlers are bigger.
That's right.
The money we do collect, we've been using this year for a variety of ad and marketing campaigns from traditional print ads. We've had digital billboards and through our co-op program the state has in Nashville, Cincinnati, and Indianapolis. Streaming video, so we've kind of diversified our advertising, so we've got a little bit, a little bit of everything. We're working on a brand-new brochure right now. The one we have has been revamped a number of times just as we run out of brochures, we go back and update it. So, it's basically the same brochure we've had since 2017. We're going to do a whole, brand-new brochure this summer going into the new fiscal year, which will be a little, little leaner, but still have all the same information. As printing costs have gone up, these brochures have gotten more expensive and as postage has gone up, they're more expensive to ship. So, we're working on a brochure that will have all the same information, but we won't have to update it as much. Because right now, as soon as we print it, restaurant opens, closes. So, they're always out of date within a very short period of time. So, this will have more basic information about restaurants, attractions, but then it'll refer people to our website because that is always updated. So, that'll save us money on the production costs, the shipping costs, and also the hassle of having to update these things all the time.
I should know this. Is the haunted house gentleman and his venture on the website already?
The haunted discoveries? No, if he opens it up, you know, as a public attraction, then we'll definitely add it. We're always looking for anything that's come up.
Because that's nationally known.
Yeah. So, for the coming fiscal year, we're planning basically the same ad spend as we did this year. Kind of the same program, but we're going to try some new publications and some new things like search engine marketing. We haven't done that in the past. We've got some money in the budget for that. But, that's all contingent upon the budget getting passed as presented. Also, I've talked to you all about Film Lex. Over the winter, we added about 40 locations, worked with 40 different properties in Bull County. Got those added on the Film Lex website and we had the executive director of Film Lex here a couple of weeks ago. Took her on a tour of Danville, Bull County, took her out to Battlefield, Merchants Row. As many places as I could get her in the two hours she had. But, she was very interested in seeing firsthand what we have. So, when people call and say, "I'm looking for this," she will remember having seen this. And she was very impressed with what we had to offer here. I've already had a couple of random phone calls because my cell phone number is on the Film Lex site with each of the locations. I had a couple of film crews have already called to ask about some properties that we have listed. So, we know that they are seeing us and they are interested.
That's great. That is great.
It's kind of longing, you know, you've got to have the right fit for it to work out. But, hopefully, we'll eventually have the location that somebody wants. Last week, I was out at camp horsing around. I've got them added to the website. They haven't approved it yet. But, the one thing they've got there that I can realize is they have, you know, the bunk houses and they got a kitchen. And that's one of the things they're looking for is places for crews to be able to stay and also, you know, feeding them. So, we'll have that as an added incentive. Even if they don't film there, they might choose to stay out there.
Now, is that entire encampment in Boyle or does it bleed over into Mercer or?
It's just in Boyle. Yeah.
I've been out there many times.
So, anyway, hopefully get some, get some results from, from that. We also built a page on our own website where we have all the same listings. So, if you go onto our about section of our website, you'll see filming Bull County. And then, we have each of the 40 listings and we'll add more. You click on the link, it takes you to the Film Lex website. So, we can't do the same thing they do with the multiple photos. We are trying to promote it through there and then the city has to put a link on the city's landing page to go back to our page. So, we're trying to get, get the word out, you know, as far as we can. We're also working with Development Corporation on wayfinding signs for Junction City. Carmen sent the encroachment permit into District 7. They sent it back with some suggested changes, which we expected. They're working on those right now. Once they get that fixed, they'll send it back for Seminole again. And hopefully, they'll approve the changes and then we can go on to the next phase, which I guess would be bidding the project out. So, it's feasible to have those signs in place sometime later this year if all works out.
I noticed coming in from 127 to Harrisburg, there's two wayfinding signs right close to Faulkner Road. They look almost identical. Have you noticed that?
I hadn't noticed, but. They have different content on them.
They do.
Okay.
It's different. There's, it happens to be that there's so many, I guess, things.
Real close together though, yeah, yeah.
They're, they're back-to-back, but there's, there's like three, I think, entities on one sign and another three entities on the other side.
Okay, okay, yeah. Kind of throwing me off there a little bit because I just, I saw it, you know, pretty quick.
Well, slowed down a little bit. They're designed to be able to read it 55 miles.
Big sign, say the same thing.
You must know the sheriff or something.
You reckon? Maybe Park wanted to give me a ticket.
Last thing I want to mention is we've got two finalists in the Kentucky Living Best of Kentucky Contest, Sweets by Cindy's and Burke's Bakery. Voting goes on through the end of this month. You can go into the website once every day and vote on them. And it really helps us because we have the first-place winner, we can use that to market. And we got the state's best bakery or the state's best sweet shop. And that's something that people are always looking for when they travel is good places to eat. I can't tell you how many people who come into our visitor's center who specifically said, "Where's Burke's Bakery?" I was told to go there. They've developed reputations, so we can use that in marketing. So, if they win, that would help us.
Yeah, that'd be great. Okay, sounds good. Lots going on.
Anything you can say on restaurants in Perryville?
We got it coming. We started yesterday and we're probably six, eight weeks out.
Now, you need to be careful out there standing in the middle of the road though, because.
I had to see the top of the building.
I slowed down, Jamie. I slowed down.
Well, I had a bead on me at one point.
It's looking great though, which is very nice, yeah. Thank y'all very much. Okay, good to see you. Y'all have a great day. All right, Mark Gordon. Facility Supervisor.
And you guys have been spending a lot of money lately.
Yeah.
Will someone else come?
We've got three bids. We'll start with the paint bid.
Start with the paint bid, all right.
Yeah, we've been doing a lot of bid overs.
Okay, the last court meeting, I think some people had reservations about Tommy Little painting.
Yes.
For 13. I talked to the guy and he said, "I don't have a lot of overhead." He said, "I own lifts. I don't have to rent nothing." And he said, "I'm not only the owner of the company. He said, "I do all the painting." He said, "I can beat everybody's price." I said, "To make sure that we were comparing apples to apples," I said, "I want to see, want to know what kind of product you're using." And he is actually using Sherman Williams, whichever one else used the same paint. It's called a dry fall.
Dry fall?
Dry fall. It's an acrylic dry fall. Same paint as everybody else. I picked 10 because I thought, you know, if we can get twice as much area painted as the second one, I'd be willing to give him a try.
And he provided references.
And he, yeah, he did provide references of some construction companies. Brett Construction and Bandar Construction were his references.
Did the bid process for everybody go into the surface preparation and the timing and humidity of the day? And all, all the kind of details that are critical in professional jobs?
Yes, he's actually, he used, he already sent me a thing. It's called a no-rins pre-paint cleaner from Sherman Williams. That he uses, we use to actually clean the surface.
It says that he supplies all materials needed for cleaning and prep and paint interior walls and ceilings. There's a one-year warranty on the products. He's fully insured and he's associated with the Better Business Bureau.
And the, you're reluctant? I mean, the next one is Winter Circle at 32. Well, he's twice as high as the first one.
So, I agree. I think, you know, based on your research of him, I think we give him a shot.
And he's using the same product as every one of these. Had a Sherman Williams rep come out and look at what they wanted to do. One thing that he was happy about, we had talked about white and we went to like a light gray. And it'll cover up more of the stains and stuff like that.
Okay, so you need a motion to approve Tommy Little painting in the amount of $13,000?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Master Gage, your second? Master Sleeper, all right, any discussion? All those in favor signify the saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. You can make him aware.
Second one was some concrete work, which is going to be at the front of the new recycling building. The way it was in the past, they could, they could actually back two semis in at the front to a loading dock. And we also have two loading docks around on the side. Angie said they didn't really need those in front, so we're going to fill it, fill the holdings with rock. And like four concrete ramps under there where they can bring their recycling trucks from the different convenience centers and dump. And local people can also back into the building. We had two bidders on that. Lee Concrete bid at 10,302. And we had Cass Concrete for $35,990. I recommend Lee Concrete. They've made multiple pour concrete for us in the past and have always done a good job.
They're both local, happy to show them. Okay.
I'll make that motion as well.
All right.
He's concrete.
I have motion by Master Gage, second by Master Bodnar to approve the bid from Lee's Concrete in the amount of $10,302. All those in favor signify the, signify the saying aye? Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. The third one was our roof solution. We still have several leaks. And we had nine different bids on that and some were for TPO. And some were for spray coating. My opinion, the TPO is a better option than the spray coating. I think it would hold up better in the long term. As far as the TPO, I recommend the D and I roofing. They come in the lowest and they actually, we'll say they're using a 60-mil product. And they also included in their bid, replacing some of the exterior gutter. Some around $12,000 for some of the repairs did, which none of the others did. And they come in at 367,700.
My husband says, I'll give some free, free advice. He says, "Go with the TPO." And make sure it's with field insulation, twin ridges, run another layer of foam insulation, whatever thickness. It's 60 is usually, and I heard you say 60. But, anyway, he said, "You can see an example of it at the medicine shop that he put on about 20, 30 years ago." And our shop at our house has been on there for 20-some years and that's a TPO. And they're doing now, out at the State Garage, aren't they doing a TPO?
They did.
They've already got it come over?
I actually got it on.
So, it's a good product, he says, yeah.
It is a good product. There was one company that bid a 45-mil, you know, a smaller grade. I didn't much care for, but, which all of these are, do have a 20-year warranty.
And they also have, this from D and I has an installer's workmanship warranty.
Right.
But, when can they start?
Yeah, because we can't do anything else until we get the roof finished.
All these other, all these other things are contingent upon them putting a roof on.
I did not ask that. I actually called D and I. I thought maybe they'd made a mistake because they put the exterior gutter on their bid because somebody else did. And he said, "No, we, no, we put it on there. It looked like you needed, you know, some work on it." I said, "Well, that's great. I just wanted to make sure that." Include that.
Since they can start June 5th and complete it June 30th this summer.
That'd be great. They've got three references, Drake's Middle School in Bowling Green, Perry County Central High School in Hazard, and the Boone County Rest Area in Walton.
And I'll be honest with you, I had a guy from Paramount call me one day this past week. And he said, "Well, I guess we got a shot at getting that bid." And I said, "Well, we've not made a decision yet." And he said, "Well, D and I was there and bid it." And he said, "We just can't bid." I'm not saying he doesn't do good work. We just can't bid him on the bid. Well, it's good to know.
Well, I'll make that motion as well, that we go with the recommendation of D and I contracting and get them going.
Yeah, it does say they can commence. I see where you, found that where you said that now, June 5th, yeah. bidder agrees to commence work within 14 days of the county issuing the notice to proceed. That's all. I have a motion by Master Gage, second by Master Bodnar. Any discussion on the D and I bid for roofing in the amount of 367, 367,700? All those in favor signify the saying aye? Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
And once they get the roof on it.
Get your work cut out for you now.
Well, I want to mention one thing. I do have, we do have funds in our line item to do the concrete and the painting. But, now when it comes to the roofing, we'll have to move some money for that project.
Now, we know how much.
Now, you know.
Yeah, now we know how much.
And once we get the roof on, it won't rain again until November.
When it becomes November, we won't worry about it.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you all.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Don't forget that. All right, next up, we have the Dead Livestock Agreement and Alan Goggan is here.
Patiently waiting.
Patiently waiting from the Conservation Board and he's going to present the agreement for your approval.
Okay, I'm representing the Bull County Conservation District today. I brought you all some information on things that we're doing out at the Conservation Office.
Thank you.
I can pass those around and look at them at your leisure. For what I came for, the dead animal, as of April 30th, year-to-date, we picked up 894 DC statues. There was a few days there in February where the truck had to run two trips a day. It's been a tough winter. I do have a copy of the memorandum of agreement. Angie has looked at it. We had a meeting one night with Trilly, Angie, and the guys at the office. Rita was there also. And it's, it's pretty simple, real close to what we did last year. I guess the biggest thing in here that we put in probably was if the truck goes down, it's got something major to it, that we're going to take it to Somerset so we can get it back on the road quicker. It was down two weeks.
Two weeks.
For emergency break cable, which it could be done a lot faster than that if we take it to the. And, and they agreed. We talked to them that they would speed things up.
If anything major, where the truck was going to be down for several days in a row, yeah.
We're just running down there, get it back on the road as fast as we can.
And that was the only addition.
Is there any money in a account? Do we ever have money to put in for the truck? You know, you had said that you had extra money. You'd put it in for a new truck. In reserve. Do we have any reserve?
There is some.
There is some.
Not a lot.
I don't know that much.
Not a lot.
There's not a lot, yeah.
Not a lot.
But, the truck is up and running now. As far as I know, we're going to find the truck.
And then we also included that. And then we also included that Angie or one of her staff will notify the Conservation District any workdays excluding weekends and holidays if the truck is not gonna run, so that they're aware.
That way, if somebody calls into the office saying, or catches us on the street, I've told my truck's not running, we have to say, I don't know, we don't know that it's not running, unless somebody out there contacts us.
And that's just a matter of communicating.
Yeah.
So the amount that the Conservation District will compensate is eighty thousand, up to eighty thousand six hundred and thirty-one dollars, and that is, includes a two percent increase, COLA increase from last year. And that's part of the agreement on number two, that they will be limited. Do you have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Master Sleeper, second by Master Gage, any discussion on the agreement? All those in favor signify the saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries, Master Ellis, do you have comments?
They're not related to that, but they want Alan to get away.
Okay.
This is a very needed service that's being provided in the county, and we definitely do not want to lose this service.
Absolutely, you can tell by just the numbers.
Yeah. Yeah, it's huge.
It was bad weather, it was a bad weather.
You know, as I said before, as a city boy, I had no idea that this wasn't a thing, but it's kind of crazy how often it occurs.
And it beats the alternative, farmers taking them, burying them back in the field, which, I mean, there's occasions that you still have to do that, but the majority of them can be picked up, and they're not buried, and they're not thrown in the creek, and, you know, so it's a much needed service that we provide, yeah.
I hope you got a chance to see that article on the black vultures. I'm very pleased that the publisher, who I've been very fortunate to get, to know, he's responsible for eight or ten Kentucky and Tennessee and, I think, Indiana newspapers. And I've submitted a letter to the editor going into more detail. And I got news Monday morning that it's probably gonna be published in all those newspapers, I'm really hopeful, so. Thank Danny, and do you know Stephen Carney? He's the young man from Washington County who had several quotes in there as well. He's an up and coming magistrate over there, he's an auctioneer as well, catalog auctioneer and others. But hopefully people are gonna pay attention to it, because Andy Barr is acting in Congress to do something very significant. Those birds are protected exactly like American eagles. They had no understanding of what they do when they came up in South America, and I think that first impediment to kill them, killing them, was in nineteen ninety-six.
And then we were talking about trees earlier, and I'm gonna mention the tree rebate program.
Sure.
Because Volcanian residents can purchase up to two trees per year, submit the invoice to the Conservation District, and get reimbursed up to two hundred and fifty dollars, right? Fifty percent of that, fifty percent of two hundred and fifty dollars. And you can get them at Pax Nursery or Key's Nursery any month except May, June, July, and August. So that's a.
You want them to live.
Good program.
The months to sit a tree is the ones with R in it.
Yeah. So, I think that's, Conservation District does a lot.
We have lots of things going on.
Yes. Anything else you wanna mention on this, hand it out, okay, all right. Well, thank you very much. We'll get the agreement signed and give you all a copy of it, and be good to go.
Go on.
All right, thanks for being here.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it. All right, last but not least, our attorney, Chris Harris. Public safety building contract.
Yeah, so I was provided with this contract from Codell, and I reviewed it, had a few things that I had questions about, Julie and I went over it, she asked some follow-up questions with Jim Codell, and got the answers that we were satisfied with. I don't see any problems with the contract, and I would recommend that we approve it.
Okay, she's also included, sorry, she's also included the answers to the questions that she asked, so. Have a motion by Master Gage to approve the contract?
And authorize the judge to sign.
Awesome. Second by Master Bodner, any discussion on the contract? Because it is quite lengthy.
Yes, it is.
A bunch of legal mumbo jumbo.
That's right, for the attorneys to figure out. All right, all those in favor of approving the agreement with Codell Construction signify the saying aye? Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
We do want it just for the public.
Yes ma'am.
There's a seven percent engineering architect fee and a six percent Codell construction fee, just so the public understands what we're paying of the total cost.
And when will they commence?
Soon as we sign this, we'll, he's gonna get his architects in touch with us, and we're building a public safety building.
Go.
Excited. Okay, magistrate reports, and today we'll start with magistrate Ellis.
Thank you, Judge. A year ago this month, Harold Edwards won a statewide preservation award, and Peggy and I were invited to attend a very sophisticated presentation in the Old Capitol, which was quite an honor for us to go, because he's the one doing all the work, and it was just a very fine day. Well, I'm pleased to announce that I believe it's an identical award, certainly a preservation award, will be presented at the end of the month for Ted Steinbach regarding the Crawford House.
Is that the Ida Lee Willis Award?
I'm sorry?
Is that the Ida Lee Willis Award?
Well, he actually did not put down, when he wrote a quick note to me to please attend, but I'm sure, I'm sure it is, yeah. But that is recognizing just how significant his investment has been on one of the most historic battlefield or battle of Perryville.
And he's not finished.
Oh, no, no, and, and he has, he has just spent so much money and time on that project that it's just praise worthy, it really is, I'm excited about that. Chris and I talked, it's a good clarification for me, because I didn't quite understand, but we've received criticism for, quote, "our ordinances" on the fees that are charged for animals that get out and that sort of thing, but Chris clarified to me that much of that that comes is in the court costs and what is prescribed as the fee structure by the state, so that helps. We often are included or targeted on things that if we don't know how to answer, the criticism is gonna lay with us when it doesn't really belong, so I was glad that Chris clarified that for me. Again, related to the Crawford House, Trilly and I spoke, and she helped me get in touch through the Commissioner of Parks with a process that's gonna afford us a number of opportunities to use the nearly four acres that surround Crawford House, not only just for any events that Dr. Steinbach would like to have there, but as long as a, or as much as a long weekend where if somebody wanted to have a family reunion out there or anything else like that. And Judge, I'll let you know that on occasion I might wanna sneak our guys over there to clean things up and make sure that it's, and I'm gonna get that clear, because the young man that Russ Meyer is gonna send to me, and we're gonna go out there and look over things, I will bring up to him that, you know, if things are overgrown or anything, and we wanna have a family outing there, that hopefully we could send our guys out to clean up something.
I drove down there Saturday afternoon, and somebody has bush hogged and mowed and.
We have a.
So it's clean, I mean, right now, it's cleaned up.
We have a community leader who snuck down, in Perryville, who snuck down there a year ago. And wasn't caught by the state trespassing, but he did a magnificent job of cleaning things up, so he took it by himself, and I'm very appreciative of that.
Well, I don't know if that, if it was the Parks may have done it, you know, the Parks crew, because it's Parks property.
Recently, probably, I would think.
Yeah, yeah, because it was.
Oh, now, now, they have been down there in the past, but they didn't do what this gentleman did.
Yes, yes, well, it's been mowed and bush hogged down there, so.
Right. We had another great meeting, Tony Wilder pulled together the Subcommittee on Historic Events for the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the nation, and the events are gonna be spread out all throughout, even past Fourth of July, in some venues. Just be prepared for some wonderful Kentucky events for the nation's two hundred and fiftieth anniversary. The benches are complete except for powder coating, and we may be on the hook to carry them over and get them out. And we will, Julie and I have talked, at the point that, do you think on every foot of it, the four feet of the benches that we'll put concrete in the ground and then bore down in and secure it, is that what you've got in mind?
Yeah, he'd like to have the locations of where this is gonna take place.
So would I, because I don't wanna be the decision maker on that.
We kinda need to go.
Yeah, we need to go and take a look.
See where we have the best place.
The most trafficked areas where people are gonna stop and rest, or stop and admire the beauty of that particular section, but.
We picked out a couple of trees that we thought might work.
Oh, good, right. This is a wonderful, community-wide cooperation, collaboration from the school, BCTC, from a tremendous member of our community, Joey Bailey and Danielle's, I mean, Joey Harris and Danielle, I've got a friend, Joey Bailey. And it's the sort of thing that we need to do more of, because these benches would have cost us upward of twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars, and we have a total of investment under five hundred dollars.
I think so, yeah, I'm not sure.
And a great learning process, we have the names of the students who were most instrumental in completing them, so it's everybody coming together.
It's a great partnership with BCTC.
Again, I just mentioned that I've sent, hopefully to be published, a letter to the editor now with more details about the devastation that these, that these vultures from South America, not our indigenous birds, are doing all across the southeast, all the way out to Texas, and all the way over to Florida, and all the way up to us here in Kentucky. It's, it's just something that has to change, and Andy Barr at the congressional level is trying to do something about it, because right now, you could suffer a ten thousand dollar fine and a year or more in jail if you kill one without a permit, and that's just outrageous. And I'm thrilled that Mary Carter's here today, because she's helping me make some communications with Congressman Comer and with Andy Barr, so thank you for that. The KMCA legislative call last year was quite productive on some hints of what we need to be concerned with, areas where we might get grant money, and basically just a good opportunity for, as JC said, nearly a hundred people to be in a call to, and by the way, there were county clerks on the call as well, to get involved in the process more than some of the counties have been in the past. And I was very pleased that at the end, I had requested before the meeting began through a text message to JC, and at the end, I was, I'm sorry, this was the keko. We'd have the KMCA earlier, through Shelley Hampton, I was one of five who had the opportunity to speak, so I spoke for about two minutes about the vultures. Judge, after I end here, I've got a couple more, I'll hold this for a minute. Just put on your calendars for sometime about this time, or earlier than this next week, maybe our first meeting, Flag Day, which is extremely important to me. I'm one of those families that has a flag for my father's service. The Flag Day is June fourteenth, so that'll be on us before we even know it. Judge, the only other thing, well, no, I do wanna bring up the RV and other vehicle ordinance situation. Julie, if you'll touch on that in a moment, because there's some criticisms that are going out there that do not belong in the court's pocket, and Julie and Chris might wanna speak to that. The only other thing, Judge, if you would just touch on it briefly in your comments about the situation with the building move? Anything that you can offer up, because I'm getting rumors, and we don't wanna, we don't want them to be inscribed.
I'll wait until my time, but yes, I will.
Yeah, okay, that's it, thank you, Judge.
Thank you, magistrate Ellis, magistrate Bodner?
Yes, still waiting to find the Boyle County School Board able to work with us about the park, so that's kind of on the back burner right now, but we're still working behind the scene. Junction City Matters, we're gonna go for a grant training on Wednesday and Thursday in Lexington, so they're gonna start the process of learning how to find those grants that'll help take, you know, care of a lot of our issues. We have lots of planning going on behind the scenes about what we're gonna do this year, and what good things, especially with the balloon festival, that's gonna be a really big event for us, and we're gonna need a lot of, of course, the Bonner Scholars from Center are gonna help us with some volunteer time, and Nathan Whitlock has been really great about giving us some ideas to do with, you know, with the event. So he's been great, we're gonna get some artwork, hopefully on a T-shirt, and that's gonna be a whole process. Junction City Council had some, their meeting, they were talking about the roads they were gonna pave, and then they talked about some, maybe some, looking at some streetscapes, some, you know, doing some different things there. Still appreciate JJ, he has just been instrumental in this, we couldn't have done it without him. I'm also looking at the IRS, there's lots of good information about being a 501(c)(3) at the IRS online. I mean, I've gone through six hours of trainings to tell you, so I've made up some good notes to hand to the Junction City Matters group, and they're gonna then go in and do the same things I'm doing. We're working, and JJ's helping us work with the Junction City, the old jail, trying to get that into maybe a little community center or museum, but we're trying to get some grant money to fix that up, so we may have us a little, you know, not sure exactly how it'll end up, but that, real excited about that. This is, oh, Austin, my grandson Austin is on the baseball team, twenty-two and seven, they started out the year six and seven. And I was like, oh, this is gonna be a bad year, and then now they're twenty-two and seven and just seem to be rolling. They're just leaning around, it's been really fun baseball.
Rebels go rolling along.
Yeah, rolling along, and I've been rolling with them some, I didn't get to go last night or walk tonight, but I keep up with it.
Now, how's he hitting?
Oh, he's been mad, he was saying, he won't do a home run when I'm there. He's done four home runs every time I'm not there, and his other grandmother said the same thing.
And a number of triples, I see.
Oh, yeah, oh, God, kinds of triples, doubles, and he steals bases, his knees are skinned, his arms are all skinned. But anyway, that's what it takes, you know.
Their grandmother's athletic ability.
That's right, that's right.
I wanted to mention, this is my twenty-year celebration of not having cancer.
Awesome, yeah.
Colon cancer, if I had not gone straight to the doctor after I saw some bleeding, if I hadn't gone, the next day I called, I'm a nurse, so I knew, I was like, uh-oh, uncle had cancer, after this my brother had colon cancer, and so it's in our family, so I went straight to it, straight in, took it all out, and I've been, had no treatments, no anything. So find it, it's embarrassing and awful to talk about and think about, but it will save your life, so that, take care of that.
Well, then I'll share your embarrassment, guys, I'm looking around, and only two of us are supposedly at the end of looking at our situation, so every year prostate, because I've been there and nearly lost.
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Youngster.
Magistrate Harmon? I'm sorry? Nothing, okay, all right, everything is just smooth. Okay. That's right. All right, magistrate Gage?
Yes, the EMS committee of one met this morning with the EMS crew, and I wanna echo some of the things that Judge. And I want to echo some of the things that Judge Bottom said earlier. I mean, and I think everybody recognizes this, but we have a, an EMS crew that's second to none. I mean, they are absolutely the best in what they do, and just great. Anyway, the update is that the, Mike and the team has met with the hospital regarding the upcoming construction that we talked about earlier. And so they're in the planning process for the fact that the emergency room entryway is going to be relocated, and they're going to continue to meet and talk about that. Because it's obviously, while construction is going on, until we get to the greatness of the product, the end product, it's, it's going to be some inconveniences that are going to occur and some challenges, but they're working to work through that. They also talked about the fact that they're planning and for the Battlefield Bridge to be down for a month or two months, I guess.
My bad for not mentioning that, yeah.
And so they're, they're planning the alternative routes for that and working on that planning as well. You know, and of course, these things do happen, and things have to be replaced, and including buildings have to be torn down and redone. And so they're, they're working through those and involved in that planning process. And then Mark gave the crisis team update, and it's, and, and so did Terry on the community outreach. And, and if you all don't know, they're busy, as is our whole EMS crew. They're extremely busy, and they introduced their new, the new person this morning as well. But they made 56 community home visits, 12 individuals with substance use disorder. The type of substance was six alcohol, one meth, one heroin, one pills, two THC, one unknown. We did have three overdose cases. This is all in April, by the way, sorry. And then unfortunately, one death related to overdose. And then in the follow-up, there were five individuals that they were unable to locate at that point, you know, after the event. And one of those actually is a young lady that I found out from them this morning. It was a meth overdose. It was right down here at the corner of Fifth and Broadway. And I was, actually went out to tend to her while we were waiting on the ambulance to get there, and it's a very terrible thing, and so I can't, you know, it's, just concerning to me as somebody that's worked in healthcare my whole life, but I can't imagine, you know, them seeing that all the time. It's just a sad, sad situation. And then mental health, of course, is continuing to go up with 22 cases, six suicide ideations, no fatalities, five relate to anxiety, six relate to behavioral, three welfare checks, and two domestic violence, and then six referrals to various clinics after that. So a lot going on, and they did talk about the increasing numbers of people that are unhoused that they're seeing. And I know Magistrate Sleeper has been involved in, in housing issues, and, and it clearly is a, a growing problem in our county. And they're saying, and that's when they talked about the individual that is literally pitching a tent in Millennium Park. And this person is suffering from some mental health things. And they said that the individual told them that some uniformed officer gave them permission to, to camp there. So I'm not sure that that's reality, but that's what they're saying. And so those are a lot of things going on.
Is unhoused the new accepted term? Because I've never heard of it before.
We still use the term homelessness, but unhoused is the more, considered the more correct term.
And so, and then Mo gave an update on the, from the education side of EMS, which again, they are, they are the best at their training and education. And we have six paramedic students that are starting their capstone, which is basically the final phase of their, their training. And so that's a great thing, because the six will hopefully, some of them we are sponsoring, and they're committed to roll on to our crew as paramedics that are already on our crew.
Right.
They're going to roll on as paramedics. That four of those are, two are basically paying their own way, if you will. And they're not obligated, but we're hopeful that they will stick with us. And then we also have those that are in the Hopkinsville Paramedic Program that's, that's ongoing and, and moving forward. And then they're, they're involved in the 2024 Pediatric Readiness Program from the Kentucky Board of Emergency Management System. And that's also, you know, making sure people know how to do their car seats and et cetera, and safely transport their kids. So those are, is a lot going on. It's such a, it is enjoyable, you know, even though it's not always great, good news type of information. It's just, man, I feel, I always feel so much better knowing that in our county, when people call, we've got some very trained professionals that are en route to you, and they're bringing the emergency room right to your door. And so don't ever hesitate. If you need them, call them. They're going to get there as quick as they can, and they'll take care of you, that's for sure.
There's literally not anything that they cannot do.
Right. And also, I did want to, one other exciting thing that they get to, they get to show off themselves is they're presenting at a meeting in Atlanta in June about their, the program that we have here in our, you know, for rural communities. So that's, they're going to take the show on the road, and I think that's quite an honor, that they get to go out and brag on themselves a little bit and share what, you know, world-class, first-class program we have here in our county. So it's exciting stuff.
If you follow them on Facebook, they're always training, and they post their training pictures, and they've been training with the Danville Fire Department, and, I mean, it's just, they're, they're constantly training and to just make themselves better.
People in the surrounding county, some of their citizens say, how do we get as good as you all got?
Yeah.
And I say, well, it's a process, so it's.
I tell them they can't have him. You can't have him. He's ours. Is that your motion to approve your video report?
Yes.
Okay, turn to the second.
I'll say it.
Magistrate Sleeper, all those in favor, say you're about to say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose nay? Motion carried. Magistrate Sleeper?
Okay, on April 24th, we reviewed the animal, Boyle County Fiscal Court Animal Control and Humane Society Agreement. There were some minor changes made in the wording. And I'll let Julie speak to that, because I'm embarrassed to say this, but I can't find my notes. It's been, it's been a minute, and I can't remember what they were, but just a couple minor changes, right?
Yeah, we're updating the ordinance number because we changed that. We did, we are recommending that we remove the threshold of $25,000 for utilities. The utilities are all in our name, so it seems kind of silly to put that threshold on there. We're going to have to pay it anyways. And the third change is that we recommend that the Humane Society exercise and get the first right of refusal to adopt out all animals that are taken in the shelter, so that we have it in writing that they get to pass or accept an animal for adoption before it goes to rescue. So that, that's it.
Does that give a higher assurance that they will take them when they're brought in?
Um, we're hoping so.
Because it needs to be.
Yeah, yeah.
Understood that we expect that they'll take them.
Yeah, we're hoping that that. So those are the minor changes.
Thank you. We also purchased some livestock panels. This happens like maybe once or twice a year. Livestock get confiscated or whatever, and we need a temporary place to put them, so livestock panels were purchased. We got a good deal on some used ones from a Boyle County resident, and.
Can we say former magistrate?
A former magistrate, yeah, Rick McQuarrie, a former magistrate, and some he was selling, so we took advantage of that. The Humane Society initially agreed to let us set it up there and with the knowledge it's only going to be happening once in a great while. And then they backed out for some reason. I don't know if it was liability or what, but anyway.
Mostly liability.
Yeah, so, but we have plenty of county property now. We can probably find a place to put it, so.
Do we need to put a rider on our contracts for protection in case one of the animals we take were to get out from where we're holding?
We, we will check into that. There was, I guess we kind of left it that maybe there was a farmer that could hold the animals on our behalf, but then since then, we've had an animal actually get out, so we recognize they need to be in our custody, I believe. So we're kind of working through where that will be, what kind of shelter do we need in the winter, those kind of things. So it's still under investigation, I guess.
Yeah, yeah. Some better rider, like insurance policy rider.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
Keiko would be the one to.
We're not, yeah, we're not 100% sure what that needs to look like, I think.
That means if we, if we have custody of them, and they get out and cause a traffic accident or something, we need to be covered.
Absolutely.
Well, we have liability, but I don't know how that works, but.
I think that would be covered, but.
Would just.
No, no, that's what I said.
I had it on my list to call Michelle, and I just never got to it. So I'll follow up.
April 26th, attended the Earth Day Celebration held in conjunction with the opening of the Farmer Party. Didn't get there in time to hear Judge Bottom's remarks, but didn't get there. It was a big success, anyway. April 28th, the Homeless Coalition had their regular meeting, and they're moving forward on a significant project that, they're going to be with us on our next fiscal court meeting on the 27th to share about that, so I'm going to save any, they'll, they'll fill us in on all the detail, but it's pretty exciting what they have planned. May 1st, attended Masters Ten and Events Ribbon Cutting Event out in the western part of the county on Parable Road. May 6th, Magistrate Gay and I attended the coffee meeting with City Commissioner Donna Peak. It was well-attended. There's a lot of people there, so. Let's see, then, May 8th, Judge Bottom, I attended the Dedication of Courage, the horse at the, at the public library. The, the horse sculpture was provided by the, by Heather Henson, the Henson family, and artwork was done by Brandon Long. It's beautiful. And it was interesting, Jason Cooper, Assistant Director of Library Operations, gave a history of the pack horses, the library pack horses the WPA used during the, the Great Depression. It's a very fascinating history of that, but it was, it was a great event, and it was directed by Colleen Hall, the director of the library. I received a reminder from Make a Difference Now, which is an animal welfare advocacy group, and they're reminding us that as temperatures are getting warmer, not to leave our pets, our dogs in the cars. For example, like if it's 68 degrees outside and, and less than an hour, and within an hour, the temperature in the car will be 115 degrees at 68 degrees outside.
Wow. On that point, it's important to know, because a lot of people are reluctant, but we have the right as citizens to break a windshield or break any window in a car if we see that an animal is under distress. And I would do it with no reluctance whatsoever.
At, at 90 degrees, it's 136 in the car within an hour, so. 97 degrees, it's 144 degrees. Rachel Beckman has reported that our Boyle County Animal Control Cat Census is underway, and within 24 hours, we had received 31 responses.
That's great.
And as Julie commented, posted that, that's, that's a larger-than-expected response. So this is going to help us in addressing the significant cat issue that we have in our community, so. Also, Animal Control provided some statistics. I asked them to start providing with some statistical graphs. I emailed this to the rest of the court. I didn't get it around in time to have them put a pack of them. Most significant thing is, you can see the increase of cat intakes for this, this year. This is a, this is a four years running. And this year, you look at the, you know, here's cats down here, and you look and see how many cats this, this first quarter or since, or through May.
That's amazing.
May 8th. Initial, you know, understandably, the weather's changing, getting access, so they get more calls for, for assistance. And then last thing is, they're, our Animal Patrol Department, along in cooperation with the Public Health Department, will be putting on two rabies clinics for our county. The first one is Saturday, May 31st, 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. at the Boyle County Health Department, which is on Third Street. And then the second one will be Saturday, June 7th, from 9:00 to 10:00 at the Parable Baptist Church in Parable. And it's $10 for a rabies shot, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Okay, Kenny Green?
Yes. I wanted to say one thing, add to what Magistrate Ellis said. Unlike unattended children, Kentucky doesn't have a good Samaritan law that shields people from liability to rescue a dog or cat in a car. So you said you're free from liability. That's not the case, so.
Well, I better double-check that, because, thank you.
So I wanted to let you know that. I think what you need to do is, if you see something like that, contact the police. They can assess the situation. But just like some random person out on the street can't just go doing that, so. I wanted to.
I stand corrected.
Keep us legal.
Keep us legal.
Okay. Next, speaking about the roads. I guess one of our magistrates was having an issue in his district with persons driving a golf cart around in the neighborhood at kind of all hours of the night, being loud, driving one of those UTVs as well. And so I kind of issued a statement or opinion as far as how the law is currently. And the law is changing, though. On June 27th, the law regarding ATV, UTV has changed where those type vehicles can be permitted on certain roadways. But it's up to the local government as far as how much they can be on, or, you know, you can say countywide, you can do it, or, you know, I don't recommend that. You know, there's, you can limit it or, you know, extend it as, as much as, you know, that you feel is appropriate. But that's something I think that on June 24th, we're actually having a town hall meeting at Inter County Energy from 6:00 to 7:30, and we're going to address that issue. Trudy's going to lead that meeting, so I, I think it's important. And, you know, a lot of communities do have golf carts or ATVs out there, and I, I think that in certain places, they, they would be appropriate. Actually, in the city of Danville, they have a golf cart ordinance, and they allow for golf carts, but there are certain requirements. First of all, and for all vehicles, you have to have a license, driver's license. So that was one of the issues in one of the other magistrate's districts. Persons were driving, children were driving around. They didn't have a driver's license or anything like that, so that, that's the one thing. Regardless of, you know, what we pass in the future, that's going to have to be a requirement that you must have a driver's license to operate on, on the roadway. But one thing I, I like about what Danville has, they talk about when you operate in a city, you can't operate on a roadway that's more than 25 miles per hour. And I, I think that's important, because you don't want to come over some rise or whatever. Some golf carts going 25, and you're going 55, and you slam into it opponent like a football or something, you know, so. Yes, we're really going to need to think long and hard about, you know, where we're going to allow or not allow these, these UTVs, ATVs.
And that's something about county roads. Most county roads are, are 55 unless they're posted. So the city has a lot more roads that would limit it, speed limit, than county does.
Right.
Yeah, and on that issue, though, and a lot of the golf cart use in the city of Danville actually happens on the Center College campus. And so that was a big part of that, because. actually happens on the Center College campus, and so that was a big part of that because Center has a lot of golf carts that are part of the campus maintenance and, and public safety and athletic training in my world, and, and so they did set that, and there's certain requirements that we have to adhere to, to be on the city street, but that, there are, as you know, would have been if you were driven around Center's campus, there are a lot of golf carts running around, and on cities, on city streets.
And whatever we set, we're still going to, there's requirements even before we say what roadways, you know, it's, it's got to be street legal, it's got to be inspected by the sheriff's office, just going to have the turn signals, the rearview mirrors, the taillights, not necessarily helmets if you're under, or if you're over a certain age, but, I mean, you could, you could put those restrictions maybe on there, I'm, I'm not for sure, I have a debate on that, but I just know as far as where they can go and so forth, but until we pass something, the law as far as like four-wheelers and so forth is dictated under KRS 189, 515, and, I mean, four-wheelers can cross roadways, they can take part in farming, agricultural activities, logging, snow plowing, things like that, but again, the KRS on that talks about how you must be a licensed driver, so that, that's the big, that's the big thing.
I'm so glad you brought that up because I received a very extensive and direct message from a constituent about this, and it was attributed to our action. Our action was taken 60 miles away in Frankfurt. It was not our action, so I want the public record to state that, and I want hopefully that gentleman who wrote to me to understand that we have not taken action at this point.
All right. So, moving on, last night was the senior awards at Boyle County High School. Austin Bodner was not there, I guess, because he's at baseball game, but he did get some awards, so it's funny because they actually announced him as April Bodner, and the lady had to come back and make a correction, which is his older brother, but they're going to be going to the same, same college, so I thought that was kind of funny. But congratulate everybody that received awards, my daughter got a couple, so that was pretty cool, saved me a few dollars.
Yes.
Graduation's going to be made the 31st, and so it's, it's kind of crazy how this year's gone by so fast, but that graduation date is kind of, it coincides with the breast ban, so I don't know how that's all going to work out, but the breast ban's going to be the 29th to the 31st. I don't think, it's done on Saturday, they're not doing anything Sunday anymore, which I really enjoyed that Sunday service that they always had, the church service, but that is not part anymore, and I wanted to say that tonight is a big night in high school tennis. The Boyle County Boys and Girls High School Team will be playing against the Danville Boys and Girls High School Tennis Team for the district championship. Mr. Purdom is the girls' coach for, for Danville, so I'm the assistant girls' coach for Boyle County, so. So, it'll be, it'll be interesting, but, you know, we all get along, so it'll be, it'll be fun, it's, it's enjoyable to watch tennis, so I think that, that is all I have. But again, reminder, you know, about the ATV, the golf cart, we're going to have that meeting in June 24th from 6:00 to 7:30, and invite everybody to come out for that.
Thank you.
Judge, could I mention one thing?
Sure.
Went to my grandson's UK graduation.
Yes.
That was quite an experience, very proud of him for graduating.
Yes, that's awesome.
He's done a real great job.
Wonderful honor.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, Julie.
Just a couple of things, starting to work on the administrative code, you know, that has to be reviewed next month, it's the only time we can make changes, so I will be putting in, at this point, it looks like the travel policy that we passed last, what was that, last fall? So, that'll go in. Magistrate Cullen had asked for some, another budget manual, but we kind of feel like that could just be squeezed into the administrative code instead of having another additional manual that we have to go through. And then, anything else that you feel needs to be looked at, so just give, give me some feedback if you think of anything. I can send you out a copy of what we're currently operating under. Let's see, the Ethics Committee, there were nine people who have not completed their statement of financial interest, they are being fined, we did send out fine letters last week, so if you get any complaints, you're aware of it.
And that's out of a total count of how many?
Oh, 178.
See, I mean...
It's very small.
It's appro, it's appropriate that we follow through, or administrative staff here is just going to be tormented year after year?
And this is by the ordinance, this is not the Ethics Commission, this is your ordinance that, that puts a final action if, if you don't, so.
Julie, do you know, are these all volunteer-appointed people?
Absolutely.
So, I mean, they should just withdraw if they're not going to play by the rules.
I think there is some confusion though, because how we had that period of time where we had to rewrite the ethics ordinance, and then it went back out, it was due maybe in like November, December, and then they turned around and got, I'm sorry, maybe it's October or whatever, and then got something back in November, or like, some of the people I've talked to, they're like, I just did that.
Yeah.
You know, so that was, I think that's confusing to some.
Yeah.
I don't want to make excuses for anybody, but I think that's part of it, yeah.
There were six that just haven't responded at all. There were three that responded, we sent them back because they incomplete or they filed them late, and, and they have minor penalties, ranging anywhere from $300 to 500, 5 is the top. So, they can still issue a show cause for why it was late, and so anyways, I just don't want you to get calls and not be aware of what's going on. We are working on trying to get the publishing rights to reprint Iron Baby Angel, the little history book about, about the fountain out in front of the courthouse, so we're working on that. Animal Control has written a new policy for cats, how we handle cats, and I'll be bringing that to you at the next meeting, and still have a couple of RFPs to write for the Breit King Building, so just working, working, working.
Yes, very hard. All right, thank you very much. Okay, I will close this out. Coming up this weekend is the Artful Event at Pioneer Playhouse, sponsored by the Arts Commission and Renée Becker. It is both Friday night and Saturday night for a $100 ticket, you can go on Friday night and preview the art and get your eye on something that you would like to have, and then on Saturday night, they actually do the drawing for the tickets, and then you, you get to pick out a, a piece of art, so everybody leaves with, with a piece of art. We will be having our budget review next Tuesday, the 20th, from 1:00 to 4:00. This coming Friday, Shepherd's House is having a cookout at 11:30, and all the fiscal court is invited, anybody that would like to come. Last Friday, we had Constitution Square Park Cleanup, and Roger Johnson and some of his crew and Mark Gordon headed that up, and we worked, I went down and we worked in the park and planted flowers and pulled some weeds and raked some leaves and...
Roger, did she actually work or was this photo op?
No, no, she, she will rust out.
So, we did that, and the park does look very nice, and it's continuing to, to look better all the time, so I'm, I'm thankful that we have Public Works that's willing to help out on things like that. We have completed our spring paving, and we paved Old 150 Springfield Road, Cranktown, part of Cranktown, Aldercrane School, and then part of Coconair that hadn't been paved like within the last five years or so, it was paved five years ago, the one part.
Well, part of it was five years ago.
Okay.
Was a mile of it.
Yeah.
Of course, Coconair is three, almost three and a half miles.
Yeah, yeah.
So, a mile of it had been paved about five years ago, so we started from that and finished it out this, this spring.
Yes, and so Roger and I met Monday afternoon, and, well, him and Mark, and we discussed, you know, some road lists for fall paving and how, what roads we think, and we've come up with pretty much all the roads down 300, Magistrate Bodner. So, that's, that's what we're going to plan on for our fall paving, yeah.
And possibly a couple of roads in Jason's district.
Yes, District 4, yes.
Yeah.
Couple we took, discussed, the majority of them was 300, but then we did have a couple on the east side that we thought would probably, nine or 10, yeah, that, that, so we're going to, we're going to turn in to the legislature and see what they will approve, they'll only approve 10s.
Right.
So, what they don't approve, then we can add that to our paving list, what we have put in the budget for paving.
Sounds good.
Okay, let's see, courthouse will be closed on Memorial Day, so that's a couple of weeks away, but we will be closed on that Monday. As Attorney Herron mentioned, we'll be having the public hearing May 24th at Inter County Energy.
It's June 24th.
I'm sorry, June, June 24th, about the new legislation and the golf carts and ATV.
It's two different things, but I think they're kind of, go together, so I think that we need to discuss it all.
So, any of the public that's interested can attend that public meeting and get any questions or concerns answered about that new legislation. Let's see, okay, the courthouse moved, we're kind of at a standstill right now, the last meeting that we had with AOC and, oops, and the department heads and, and those, it's okay, Steve, I'll get it, it's okay, sorry. Thank you though. They made a, a second visit out to the Estee building, and their architect was here and then he went out there to look around, and after that, he recommended that there were some security concerns and that there would not be enough room for AOC to operate on the opposite side from, with the county's side. So, they are now drawing up a new plan, they're going to present it to us, and we'll see what exactly they need and what their wants and wishes are. They're also looking at other properties, so it may be that AOC does not go with us, they may go to a separate location.
If they can find something.
If, if they can find something, they're working with local...
Real estate agents.
Thank you, real estate agents, to see what's available, and we pretty much told them, well, we met, Julie and I met with Judge Petrie and Andrea Tuesday, and we pretty much told them everything that we knew was available because we've already looked at, and so they're, they're just, right now, we're in Limbo, we don't have a date to move or, or anything until they decide what they're going to do for sure, so that's the update on that, is that what you wanted to...
There's just in that site that they chose, and there, there's a central area that they did not see, that's where all the factory infrastructure is, and they're worried about these industrial panels on the walls and...
It's legit concern.
It is, and so I think what we'll see soon is a creative proposal, maybe to merge us all, use what we can, see if we can fit everybody, possibly, you know, so I think that's where it's headed, so.
Judge, now that you've actually said Estee, I think those of us who've been reluctant to say where it was, it's now on the public record, so.
Yeah, 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 place available that will, you know, the house, so.
Everybody was figuring it out, but, yeah.
Yes, yeah, and I'd like to recognize Mary Carter for being here with us today, thank you. Do you have anything that you would like to report to the court, or?
I don't, but just thanks everyone for letting me be here, it's always great to be here and to kind of learn more about what's going on in the county. As always, I'm just a hop, skip, jump away, so if you guys ever need anything, you know where I am. The Congressman is in DC this week, and he, he just released, we had an art competition, and one of our third place sweaters is a student from Danville Independent, and so her artwork will be in the Danville office, and so I've spoken to the art teacher over there, and we're going to try and have the student and her family come into the office and see it, and so if you guys ever come in, we'll be there, but that was just announced today, he had a press release on it.
Very good.
He's in DC this week, and so if there's ever anything that the office can do, just feel free to reach out to myself or the DC office, but as always, we're here for you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
Yeah, we did. And that is all I have, so if there's nothing else, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Master Gabe, second, Master Bodner, all those in favor signify the same eye. Any opposed, nay?
Candace, thank you for standing with us.
We're adjourned, yeah, thank you Candace.